...Commission meeting for this date, August 5th, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please, Sheri?
Chair Quilisi?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
Here.
One vacancy. Thank you.
Terrific. Pledge of Allegiance, would you do that? Lucas, you've got a flag there.
I do, okay. Absolutely. Everybody stand. Hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
-of the United States of America.
-the United States of America-
And to the Republic-
-for which it stands-
One nation-
One nation under God-
Under God.
Indivisible-
For all.
With liberty and justice for all. Terrific. That was difficult. We're gonna have to start doing these live. Just like that a whole lot better. Okay, public communications. Do we have, Lucas or Sheri, do we have any communications from the public?
No, we do not.
Other than the applicant in this case?
No.
No.
All right, then we'll move on to the consent item. Item number one, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, July 15th, 2020. Any requested changes or corrections from any of the commissioners?
Minor change. I think under Discussion Item 2, with the, under the staff, I think we just want to say the Commission deliberated on proposed changes to Title 10, not just the Land use table.
Yeah, I had suggested proposed changes to the sections of Title 10 discussed in the draft text amendment.
Oh, fine, great.
If that, if that works for you.
Yep, that works.
And then in Item 4, suggested, just reported on items or cases anticipated to come before the Commission in upcoming meetings. That's a good standard thing, and then if somebody wants to know more details, they can look at the video.
Yes.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. I would entertain a motion then to approve the minutes as amended.
See, this is Kathy Nolan. I can't see her-
Yes.
But I'll go ahead and make a motion if that's okay.
Great.
That we adopt the Ojai Planning Commission meetings for the, minutes for the meeting July 15th, 2020, with the amendments as just shared or spoken.
As discussed, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, second.
Any second from Commissioner Lottis, thank you, any discussion? Sheri, a roll call, please.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes. Great. Okay, we will move on to Item 2, a discussion item. Oh, a discussion item, okay. Appeal of Staff Decision Case Number 20-026 Regarding the Reconstruction of a Non-Conforming Fence Located Along the Northeast and West Sides Of The Single Family Property Located at 603 Lyon Street. Appellant is Kyle and Liz Von Hassel. Could we hear from staff on this, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Quilisi. The item before you tonight is an appeal of a staff's determination regarding revocation of a zoning clearance that was issued. I do have a presentation tonight, and as well as the applicant or the appellant, in this case, has a presentation as well. I'm going to share my screen now and pull up the first presentation. So tonight we have, before the Planning Commission, consideration of an appeal by the, the appellant, Kyle and Liz Van Hassel. I'd like to go on a little bit of background regarding this appeal, and then go into a little bit about fences, non-conformities, and then walk through some of the visuals, and then at the end, provide staff's recommendation as well as, and this was provided in the Agenda Report, an alternative determination as well. In terms of the background, this zoning clearance application for a fence proposal and relocation was applied for by the appellant, which was the applicant at that time, in November of 2019. Staff went, in doing this, we went back and forth with the applicant regarding this, this item. Asked for additional information, clarification, site visits were done, both with, with city staff, as well as with the applicant. In March, and, and more specifically, March 18th, we issued a zoning clearance. That zoning clearance allowed for a fence of six feet in height along Grand Avenue and Lyon Street, for a portion of Lyon Street, and then a three-foot fence along Summer Street, which is on the, the south side of the property. I'll be showing a visual here, here in a moment for all three of these visuals. In June, June 16th, a, there was a visibility concern identified by code compliance. That then led to a discussion that code compliance had with myself, and after doing some quick research, we determined that a stop-work order needed to be issued because staff had identified, I had identified, that there was an error made in this zoning clearance, and that needed to be addressed. So the stop-work order was issued on that day. Three days later, after doing some research and making some determinations, I met on-site with the property owners, Liz and Kyle, and explained the situation. And, and explaining the situation, I identified the, the determination that I was being prepared to make, and that determination identified front yards for all three of the streets. For Grand, for Summer, and for Lyon Street. That determination was mailed to the applicant for the zoning clearance, which revoked their zoning clearance, and provided them with options, which included appeal, an appeal of the decision that I had made, the, or determination I had made, the possibility for a variance, which is discretionary. Reduction in the height of the fences was also an alternative, or removal of the fence altogether. Those were all options. In July, more specifically July 9th, the, the property owners appealed staff's decision, and has, has moved forward with that option. That was clearly an option, it's within the code's provisions, to appeal any staff decision or determination, or director determination. So that's where we're at tonight, and that brings us to, to today's meeting, August 5th. Now fences just in general, I think it's, it's important to identify that there are different categories that these fences structures can fall into. You know, there are many legal non-conforming fences in Ojai, this is not the only one. You can probably walk, walk down a street and identify several non-conforming fences, that just happens over time. And that, that's either through replacement, or or bringing it in conformance with the current Ojai Minnesota Code standards. And then so, there's, there's kind of four different categories to look at this. It's, it's a new fence, where the fence is maybe not existent, or the fence is being removed and then replaced, that's considered to be new. And that's required to meet current standards. There's a legal non-conforming, where it's been legally established, you know, during that time in which it was installed, could have been 10 years ago. Those standards have changed, and then those standards identify that that fence, and its location, and potentially even height, are no longer in compliance with the current code. There's an existing conforming, that means the, it's been established to the standards of the time, and over time, it stood the test of time in terms of the zoning code. And it still continues to be conforming. And then there's your illegal, which is not built to the standards at the time, and does not have any sort of a permit, so that is just straight out an illegal fence, or structure. So, I, like I said before, there's three visuals that I have here that I wanted to identify, and the first visual is the March 19th determination that was made. And that March 19th determination was a part of that zoning clearance. That zoning clearance made the determination that the front yard area was determined to be Summer. The side was determined to be Lyon, and the rear was determined to be Grand Avenue. Now, in doing that, it was determined to be a corner lot. And that's all it was. There was no other determination of it being any other lot, other than a corner lot. And that's where these determinations, in terms of rear yard, side yard, and front yard, were identified. There was also within this parameter, and you'll see this in all three, a visibility triangle, which is also a part of the development standards that we have, from a safety standpoint, along the corners and edges of a property, or a lot. So that's, and so, in addition to that, you're looking at a six-foot-high fence. See my, there we go. Along Grand, so that runs parallel with Grand, and then parallel with Lyon, and then turns in. And that's really the location of where the fence was at pre-existing, to what we're looking at here. In addition to that, there was a fence along the edges of the property line here, that you can see. But in making that determination, the front yard being along Summer, they initially had a fence that was six feet in height, along this area. And they recognized that that was going to be reduced to three feet, as a part of that zoning clearance. Moving forward to the June 25th letter, determination that was mailed out to the property owners. It identified front yards for Grand Avenue, for Lyon Street, and for Summer. And that determination was based on two of the definitions within the Minnesota Code, the Title 10. Within that are two, two definitions. One is a definition for through lot, which identifies two parallel streets, one being Summer, and the other being Grand Avenue. When that condition exists, it's referred to as a through lot. So it meets that test, for it being considered a through lot. So, when it's a through lot, there is no rear yard. Both sides become front yards. So that's, that was the determination made for both Grand and Summer. Now, for Lyon, the lot is also a corner lot, in terms of how it operates and functions, and its relationship to the street, and to, to other areas. So it has, in terms of the determination that, that I made, it has both conditions, so both conditions are being met here. It's at least two streets, it has frontages on at least two streets, so it's a through lot, in terms of how it has two streets parallel, on either side. And it's a corner lot, because it has, it's, it's butted up against at least two streets. Compounded with their front door facing Lyon Street. When the front door faces Lyon Street, or there is access to, or facing a specific street, that area is identified as the front yard area. So that's why you're looking at, and I've made the determination, that Grand Avenue is a front yard, Lyon Street is a front yard, and Summer Street is a front yard. In doing that, the fence height is reduced. It's reduced along Grand Avenue to three feet. It's redu, it's, it was already identified within the zoning clearance as three feet along both Summer and a portion of Lyon. Pursuant to the current code, it also requires that fence to be set back five feet, which is why you see the property line here, the approximate location of the property line here. And then the new fence, which is, which is highlighted here, in, in this dark dashed line, that's pulled back a minimum of five feet. So that's why you're seeing it here. And then it would obviously be the case here, it would be a five-foot setback along here as well. The visibility triangle requires a a maximum height of three feet, or a limitation in the height of three feet. Well, the fence is already three feet in height. So that's, that test is being met here, and that test is being met here. So let's move on to the alternative recommendation. The alternative recommendation is a hybrid of what the zoning clearance had initially identified. I recognize that with the original determination, that there is the potential for this being an alternative. And I would be amiss not to identify that, to provide that to the Commission as a discussion piece, and for potential consideration. So with that one, and with this alternative determination, you're seeing a six-foot-tall fence along the edge and boundary of Grand and the western property, which was shown as a part of the zoning clearance determination. The difference, though, is that visibility triangle that I was talking about earlier, now the fence makes a turn, and then projects and continues down, before connecting with the house. The 12-foot setback along Lyon Street, with now Lyon Street being considered a side yard, is, is consistent with code. The code for side yards is 12 feet, that's, that would be the requirement from the property line. So, you're, you're pulling the fence outside of that visibility triangle, meeting code, and you're providing that 12-foot setback requirement along Lyon Street. Where before, the fence was coming out to the edge, and then down, it's being pulled back. Along the south side, you're seeing a three-foot fence along the edge here. Now that three-foot fence, as I was saying before, within that visibility triangle can exist. It meets that standard, it meets that test. So that's what we're seeing here. Here, we're pulling it back, the five feet, to meet current code, in terms of the fence So with that, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution attached to the administrative report, upholding the Community Development Manager's decision regarding the revocation of a zoning clearance for the relocation and reconstruction of a non-conforming six-foot-tall fence located within the front yard areas along the north and east sides of the property, located at 603 Lyon Street. That's Attachment A. Now, additionally, there is an alternative recommendation, and that is to approve a modified fence layout, which I had just provided and shown, compatible with the visibility triangle, which is intended to provide safe visual clearance at the intersection of Grand and Lyon Street, and the intersection of Summer Street and Lyon Street. The Planning Commission may adopt a resolution, which is Attachment C, as a part of the administrative report, granting in part the appeal, and approving, and approving a modified fence layout compatible with the visibility triangle for the property. So with that, that ends, that ends my presentation. I do know that the appellant has a presentation as well. So if the Commission has any questions, I could certainly answer them, or we could wait for Liz to give her presentation.
Lucas, I just have one question. So, on the, what would, would be the rear yard against Grand? What is the height, let's see, so it's, it's, where, adjacent to the neighbor, it would be six feet, and then along Grand, it would be six feet, and then what, and then in the corner cutback, it would go to three feet, and then go back up to six feet? Is that what you're saying?
So the corner cutback, if they wanted to maintain that six-foot allowance, it would, it would require that, let me show you here. It would require that fence that's highlighted here, and the dashed marks here, to be pulled back outside of that 25-foot by 25-foot.
Well, okay, so that would be six feet there, so the, the entire rear yard would be six feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Hey Lucas, this is John, just a quick question. On determining the rear yard, side yard, front yard, are there other properties in Ojai that have a similar layout?
So that's actually a, a good question, I had thought about that as well, anytime that you're, anytime that you're looking at variances, or the possibility of a variance, you always wonder what other properties have like conditions, whether it's zoning, or use. And I, I did actually find a couple, two in, in particular. Two that probably fit in a similar mold. And one is, is located at 107 North Drown, which actually isn't too, I mean, obviously not too far from here, this isn't a large town. And then 613 Kenyatta Street, which is really, actually really close, just up the street from here. So the, both of those actually have similar, similar conditions, meaning that they have three street frontages. With, like, for instance, with Drown, you have Wait and Drown, where Wait wraps around, and has a fence along the edge of the property itself, as an existing legal non-conforming. Additionally, 613 Kenyatta Street has Kenyatta, Raymond, and Emily that have the three streets, which is actually probably even a better litmus test, because there's a difference in, in the fencing at that location, where there are three-foot-high fence locations, as well as what appears to be certainly over three feet, probably closer to, in between five and six feet in height.
Yeah, I was just doing some quick Google searching, and I slipped on Google, and I found the Golden West Track. I think it's 110 Del Prado. But it has a similar makeup, meaning the year, the rear is on Grand, and it's got a six-foot fence. The side yard is on Golden West. And it looks like there's a fence, but it's hard to see, because there's a lot of growth. And then front of the yard is on that little, little cul-de-sac, which is
Del Prado, yeah.
Prado, yes, on Del Prado, and that's where the entrance is. So it, it has this kind of a similar makeup, meaning that the rear yard is Grand. Fits, you know, fits this outline that you have here. Rear yard, side yard, front yard. And it has different variances of fences as well, and it also looks like it has a visibility triangle, because there's a stop sign there.
What was the address again?
Del Prado.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, just something to think about.
Lucas, Chair Nolan here had, had a question.
Yes.
So in the code, there's a definition for a through lot, which this lot meets the two parallel streets. And then I know in our packet, there was a discussion of a determination, you know, could it be now called a corner lot? So is this something that typically the Planning Commission would make that designation, for instance, if we decided to go with the option you're showing right now? And allowing them to have a rear yard on Grand? Is, is it something in the code, or something that needs to be added, or is it just, once again, based on circumstances, and there's a determination made by Planning Commission or the Director?
Yeah, so initially, the, the determination is made by the Director, but once appealed, or called up, the, the matter is before the Commission for consideration. So within the parameters of, of the code, the Commission is within, within their duties.
To do that, okay.
Certainly figure out solutions, and maybe, maybe the three solutions that we're looking at here aren't, aren't the correct solution that the Commission finds suitable, given the, the parameters and situation we're, we're discussing tonight, so. That's all on the table, as long as it's within the parameters of the code.
Lucas, I got one more question.
Go ahead, John.
Oh, sorry. It looks like there's some other properties, obviously, in that area that are surrounded by Grand and Summer, within that, that neighborhood, so to speak. Are those properties, do they all have frontage along Grand? Is this the only property that would have a rear yard on Grand?
Yeah, so you, if you, I don't know if anybody else is, I mean, we all drive down Grand, and just, and just kind of zone out a little bit, right? Driving down Grand, there are several variations in height. The vast majority of fences that you see along Grand have that front yard feel to it.
Right.
Which is, in, in looking at, I, I was wondering if I was, when making this determination, was it outside of the parameters of how you would see Grand perceived, for someone traveling down Grand, you know, in either direction? And my comfort level got there with making this determination on front yards for all three, because of what the code has identified, in terms of meeting those tests, in terms of it being a through lot, and a corner lot. And, is it within the context of the surrounding area and neighborhood? Now, granted, I, I think I should also, I need to make sure that it's clear that staff, I'm, I'm, staff made an error, in, in doing, in doing the original zoning clearance. And that is, that is, that has nothing to do with the property owners. Because the property owners, and you'll see this in their, in their presentation, I, I believe, they did everything by the book. They, they followed all the rules, anything that we identified to them in terms of what the code required, they met. This isn't a situation where it was a bait and switch, or we came out and caught them, it was an I got, I gotcha moment.
Wasn't illegal.
They followed all the requirements, in terms of what we provided to them, so. It's, it's
Now, with, with that being said, understanding that there was a, you know, they followed the rules, they did everything they were supposed to do, they went through the permitting process, they received a permit, they moved forward with their construction, and then they were told, oh, sorry, can't do it, so. Is there room within the city to indemnify, or help indemnify, the property owner in situations like this? Because obviously, they've got costs associated with their fence.
I think that's something that, that could be discussed tonight, and potentially a recommendation moving forward to, maybe even to council, in terms of, you're talking about in terms of cost and, and recouping.
Yeah, I mean, you get a permit, you start building, and then, you know, the city comes back and says, oh, sorry, we made a mistake. Meanwhile, they've got all this sunk cost into this project already.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I think that's something that could certainly be discussed and, and on the table. I wanted to make one more note here, as I wrap up my presentation, unless there's additional questions.
Well, I do, but go ahead.
Okay. I failed to mention in the beginning here, that there were nine comments that were submitted leading up to tonight's meeting. I want to read those into the record, and also identify that we provided notification to neighbors within a 300-foot radius of this site. And those nine comments that came back were all supportive of the appellant and property owner. I want to read each, not necessarily reading the, the the support letters, but reading who the, who the individuals were that submitted the support letters. The first one I received was from a Mark Gulati. And then the second one that I received was from a Mary John Hart. Both of those in support. The third one I received was from a Marietta Moore. The fourth one I received was from an Allison Lee, also in support. The fifth one I received was from a Brenda Parsons, also expressing support. The sixth one I received was from a Gail Pike Herscher, supporting the appellant. The seventh one I received was from a Megan Shaw, Megan and Casey Shaw, excuse me, expressing support for the appellant. The eighth one I received was from a Michael Tregler, supporting the appellant. And the last one, certainly not least, is the ninth one, which is Myra Sutton, William Sutton, and Gustavo Garcia, all expressing support. So, I wanted to put that down and put that in for the record as well.
Chair Colsey, I have one additional question for Lucas.
Please go ahead.
Lucas, I just want to get clarity on the side yard on Lion Street. So, traditionally, you know, you can put a fence on a property line if you're, you know, budding a neighbor's property, but in this case, you're on a budding a street, but you're also, rather than it being a front yard, we're re-establishing it as a side yard. So, I just want to understand where, how this 12-foot, I mean, I know traditionally, it would be like, you know, maybe a five- and 12-foot setback. I'm just not sure.
Yeah, so for the, and the zoning for this site is R2. So, in the R2 zone,
Okay.
it identifies a side yard setback. One side is required to be a minimum of five feet, and then the other side, or the opposite side, would be a minimum of 12. The west side is meeting that test for five feet, or at least it's within the realm of meeting the test for five feet. So, then that leaves that side yard area for Lion Street needing to meet that test for 12 feet. And that's the reason for Lion Street having that 12-foot setback.
All right, because I guess where I was a little confused was that typically, you know, you could have a fence, and then you could have your setback before you built another structure. But is it because we're facing a street here that you're having them put the fence 12 feet away from the property line?
Correct, correct.
And it's only because it's a state application?
Could you, could you pull up the section of the code that talks about the 12 feet? I'm also concerned about that in that I think if this were the adjacent lot to the west, a through lot, that they would not have to set 12 feet back from either side yard to put a fence in. Is that correct?
Are you asking me that question?
Yes, sir.
And you're talking about the property to the west?
Right. The property to the west, I don't, I don't know what the address is there. It's somewhere in the 200 block of Grand. But if that, if that adjacent property didn't have any fence right now and they wanted to put up a fence along the two side yard boundaries, would they have to set back from the property line to put a fence in?
You're correct, they would not, as an interior lot.
And because this is along a street, they have to give up 12 feet from the property line before putting up a fence?
Yeah, so I think you're hitting on something that may, I may be retracting that statement. We can look at the code. Before we start diving into a lot of these questions, planning commission members, I would like to have Liz give her presentation as well because I think that'll give some context. You're only hearing one side of this story. I think Liz, we need to hear Liz's side of this story as well in this journey that we're on right here. So, I, let's pause that for a moment.
We will certainly do that out of fairness.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners for staff? I thought mine was just a question, but we can hold it till deliberations and go back and forth with staff then, that's fine.
I just have one question, a quick question. So, Lucas, they, actually, I had seen the big oak tree limb that fell down and crushed the fence. And so, I had assumed that this was a rebuilding of the fence because it got ruined. But, but maybe I didn't read carefully enough in the staff report, but they actually were planning to, they came in to put in a completely new fence, is that right?
Correct.
So, they weren't trying to repair the old fence and make, keep it, keep it a non-conforming condition? Okay.
I apologize, I got one more question. I know that there is, I think it's an equestrian easement along Grand.
At 13 feet, yes.
Okay, so it is 13 feet, and this takes that into consideration. And does the fence, can the fence sit right on that easement? Or does it have to be pushed back some?
So, that area is, it can go right up to the edge of that property, which is really the public right-of-way. It's, I know it's been referred to as an equestrian easement, but really, it's just the public right-of-way. It's been given a term of equestrian easement. Either way, that's where the public area starts and the private area ends.
Got it.
So, that's the, so that would be this line here that you're seeing.
And that's 13 feet back, right? So, they, you know?
Well, you have 13 feet from here.
Yes.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
So, this 25 feet is actually, it would be from beyond this point. So, the area with, that would be within there, which is probably a slight misunderstanding on this, on this edge, not necessarily on this edge, is it's more like 13 feet within that area, that equestrian, public right-of-way area that we're talking about, and then an additional 12 feet within, within their, where's my, within their private property area. That gets you to the 25.
But I do have a question, though. So, why, why is the corner cutback or triangle of visibility, why is that not taken from the, oh, I guess, I guess our code says property line because in a lot of jurisdictions, it's just taken from the street. So, in actuality, you know, whatever the corner cutback requirement is, is taken from the street intersection, not the property line intersection.
You typically take it from the edge of the street.
Yeah, from the curb, from the curb face rather than the edge of the, of the public right-of-way.
That occurs in many, many jurisdictions. Where, I didn't realize how restrictive this, this particular code provision is, except with this example, it's really...
Yeah, we had, we had this with a property at Aliso and Canyatta. And they had a block wall along Aliso and a block wall along Canyatta, and they cut that 25 feet back and made that three feet tall there, and it was taller than that everywhere else around the property. But this was brand-new. I don't think there was any block wall there when they started. So, that was a complete new build. I'm still a little confused. You're saying, Lucas, that the fence, the six-foot fence can be right up to the property line on the rear yard, but it cannot on the side yard?
Yeah, and I'll look up that code, yeah, I'll look up that code section to verify. I could be incorrect on that, but that is, that is the determination as an alternative to the recommendation, which could be modified to what we're looking at here. Can we just pause for a moment and have, I would ask for the commission if we could have Liz give her presentation now?
I think that'd be fine. Then I want to come back to this picture that you have up on the screen now. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Go ahead, Liz, let's hear from the applicant.
All right, let me get her presentation up here. All right. Just a second here. Okay.
Slide one, please.
Okay, go ahead, Liz.
All right, Liz. Where's yours? What?
Slide one, Lucas, please. This is slide four.
I have it, hold on, let me, let me stop sharing and share again here. Apologies here.
There we go.
Is that right? Is that right now?
So, thank you all in advance for spending the time tonight to weigh this out. I'm getting over a bit of a cough, and my voice is pretty scratchy, but hopefully, you can hear me okay. And I'm glad we're doing this over video, otherwise, I wouldn't be able to recipate. Here's my position in a nutshell, and then I'll provide more support for each of these points. I have a structure that is substantially built, permitted, and code compliant that has been shown not to pose a visibility hazard. The compliance measures that are now proposed would require me to demolish or partially demolish that structure, which in real terms represents the loss of tens of thousands of dollars of construction costs and permitting and surveying fees. I'm asking you tonight to allow the permit to stand. Next slide, please. Next slide, Lucas, please.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you. This lot is both a corner and a through lot. Both those things are true, but it has to follow one set of municipal code, the code governing corner lots or the code governing through lots. The city already chose which side of this to come down on. They permitted it as a corner lot under the code governing corner lots. And there's no pressing reason to undo that. It has already been considered and resolved. As a corner lot, the shortest frontage is the front lot line, which makes the grand backyard the rear yard. Since this is the rear yard, per code, a six-foot fence is permissible, built within the setback area, which is exactly what the city permitted completely validly and what was built based on that permit. Next slide, please. There is also, of course, the issue of corner visibility. However, this too was considered at length and accounted for during the permitting process. Community Development Manager Cybert presented a timeline that said that staff also initially failed to appreciate the impact of the traffic safety visibility requirements on this lot adjacent to two corners. But actually, the city took corner visibility very seriously. It was immediately identified as a primary concern, and it was one of the main topics of discussion during the permitting process. It's also worth saying here that I also take corner visibility seriously. I'm going to be pulling up to that stop sign on Lion Street as much as anyone, and I want to be able to see, and I want my neighbors to be able to see, too. But in this particular case, it happens that this 13-foot equestrian setback along Grand, which is this yellow diagonal band you see here, really uniquely met against the need for a standard visibility triangle because you pull up to that stop sign, the fence is already 13 feet behind you, and it's just irrelevant to your visibility, really, no matter how high or low it is. And you can see here that the normal visibility triangle intervention that would be taken, which would be inside this yellow triangle drawn on the fence here, is completely behind the driver's line of sight when they're at that stop sign. So, it just, it doesn't really impact it one way or the other. Next slide, please. You can see it maybe better in these photos. On the left, from the vantage point of traffic coming down Grand toward the stop sign on Lion, where you can see a car stopped, and you can see that that vehicle is fully visible from Grand when it stopped there. And on the right, from the point of view of that car, when it stopped at Lion, looking west along Grand. And you can see that the driver has a clear line of sight up Grand. Next slide, please. Community Development Manager Cybert's timeline also stated that the community development manager and public works director did not realize that the fence could potentially create a hazard. This communication from the planning office shows, though, that the community development manager and public works director concluded after a site visit in January of this year that the 13-foot equestrian right-of-way provided adequate visibility. The potential for a hazard was considered, and it was determined that there was no visibility hazard. Next slide, please. After I received my stamped zoning clearance from the city, I invested over $20,000 in the fence described by the permit. Next slide, please. On June 8th, we began construction. On June 16th, at 4:45 PM, we were wrapping up our next-to-last day of work on the fence, and I was served with a stop work notice. At that point, the structure was complete and stained, and all the boards of the fence were cut to length, individually stained, and ready to be hung. All that remained was that final day of coming along with a nail gun and hanging them, which is fast. That stuff goes fast. So, the fence is substantially built. It's 88% complete conservatively, and all the materials are in their finished form. The stop work notice was posted at the 11th hour. At this point, all of the compliance options require demolishing or partly demolishing a built structure that's permitted, code-compliant, and poses no hazard. Next slide, please. I'll wrap up by bringing it back to the summary of my position where we started and just by saying that there isn't a pressing reason to revoke this permit. Community Development Manager Cybert has expressed that he would like to undo the permit that affected the complexity of the site. He was involved for the six months of the permitting process and had the opportunity to weigh complexity at that time. There were also three months after permitting before construction began, during which reconsideration could have occurred if necessary. Instead, it was only on the eve of the last day of construction that misgivings were voiced. At this point, the structure is built, and what's being asked of me in real terms is that my family forfeits tens of thousands of dollars of investment in our property so that this perceived mistake can be corrected for the record. I ask that you allow the permit to stand, and I thank you very sincerely for your attention and consideration on this tonight. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions by commissioners for the applicant?
I do, this is Chair Nolan.
Yes.
Yes.
Liz, first of all, I'm so sorry that you had to go through this experience. I'm good, and I'm hoping tonight, you know, we're going to come to a good, agreeable solution for you. I'm not sure what it is yet, but I believe myself and my other fellow commissioners will probably say something similar. My question to you right now is, the fence that you have replaced per the permit that you received, on Grand, is it located on, the six-foot fence located on the property line between the public right-of-way or right on the property line? Okay. And then on Lion Street, is it on the property line or set in 12 feet?
It's on the property line as well.
On the property line, okay. I'm just kind of clarifying, I just want to make sure, I mean, I've read a lot, I've seen a lot, I want to make sure I'm getting it from you. And then on Lion, or I mean, on Summer, it sounds like there's not an issue because the fence is all three feet, is that correct?
That's correct, and it's not built there yet, but it will...
Okay, but it's not built there yet, okay. And then on the fence between you and your west neighbor, that's intended to be a six-foot fence on the property line, but it still hasn't been installed, is that correct? Or just maybe the post?
It has been installed, and it is six feet.
Okay, I noticed some of the letters from your neighbor, it sounded like it hadn't been installed.
Sorry, it's still to the extent that the rest of it has been, so...
Okay, okay.
It structurally exists, and the boards are ready to be hung.
Okay, so, yeah, I just want to be sure. I'm going to hand it over to my fellow commissioners, and, you know, we can gather some more information, and then we'll...
Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, Commissioner Lottis?
She's on mute. She doesn't know it.
Commissioner Lottis, you're on, you're on mute.
I was, I was trying not to make noise.
There we go.
Yeah, no, I, I think I understand what's being, what the applicant is proposing when they would like and what the city is suggesting, so. Uh, no questions right now.
Okay, Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, yeah, I have a quick question. Um, doing that the, the fence is mostly done, um, obviously you got the posts, um, put in place and, um, you know, the cement board, I guess my question is, if some sort of alternative arrangement was made, couldn't you use the majority of what was already built?
Could use some of the materials, but if we had to move the fence structure, a lot of that would be destroyed in having to take it out of the ground and new.
Just to make sure I'm clear, so the Grand, let's say for, you know, we decide to go with the alternative, um, option, and so the Grand, uh, fence stays, and then the only modification would be.
Most of it.
Most of it, the only modification might be that, that one beam that's on the corner, maybe cut that down to three feet. And then the Summer, or, I'm sorry, the Lion side, the side that's facing Lion, that, that's the one that we need to come back, and that's where we have a, a question around that twelve-foot, um, guidance, right?
Yep, that's about a third of the linear footage, which.
Yeah, so if we don't have that twelve-foot requirement, then that side wouldn't necessarily need to be removed. So then that side plus Grand wouldn't need to be removed, the only thing that would need to come down to three feet is that corner. Just, I'm just, just wanted to make sure I was clear, okay? So the majority of the cost of the fence would still apply, still, still be valid, it's, okay, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Lottis, did you have another question?
Um, no, I just have opinions la- later.
Okay, that's, yeah, we'll do that during deliberation. Um, I'd, I'd like to go back to, uh, applicants' uh, slide number three for starters.
Hold, hold on a second. Um, I would ask, do we have any, one of the other items that we had for tonight was the, the potential for, because this is a hearing item, I know it identifies it as a discussion item, but this is a hearing item. Um, if there are any, any members that logged in to identify themselves as, um, wanting to provide comments, and.
Could, could we finish with questions for the applicant before we bring the public hearing open?
Sure, I just wanted to, I wanted to make, I wanted to voice that, um, before we got too much.
Yes, we need to have a public hearing, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, can we, can we go to the applicant's, uh, slide number three, please? James must still have that in his stack, that's number eight, okay? Can we back up to number three?
Yeah, hold, hold on one second here.
All right, very good.
All right.
Um, uh, my, my question here would be, and I think we can compare this chart to the, uh, overhead photograph that, um, that, uh, Lucas presented earlier. It looks to me like here, the contention is that the stop line for traffic coming up Lion Street is at the curb face on Grand. Is that in fact the case, or are those cars farther south on Lion at the stop line?
You're talking about that stop, that kind of, um, where the stop sign is at versus, you're talking about this?
Well, the stops, I, I'm not sure exactly, the stop sign is close to, to the curb face along Grand, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
But where is the stop line where the front of the car coming north on Lion Street should be?
I'm looking at the stop line right now, and it is even with the front of the curb.
Okay, so.
It's even with the curb face on Grand?
So that would push it somewhere in the neighborhood of right here, because this is where the, the property line comes right up to the face of that, of that curb.
No, Lucas, the curb is.
No, no, the curb, the curb is at the right edge of that orange stripe.
Right, exactly.
Here.
The curb face, the curb face is on the north side of the so-called equestrian setback.
Correct.
Um, and the property line is on the south edge of the equestrian setback.
Correct. Uh, Greg Grant.
And that's what I'm asking, is where is that stop line?
The stop line is where I've drawn that little red oval. That's where the line is, it's, it's even with the front of the curb line, which is the south edge of Grand Avenue.
Chair Qualisi, our.
Okay.
Public Works Director chatted that it's four feet. Uh, if you go to your chat, you'll see his comment.
Chat.
I think, if you go down to the bottom of your screen, it'll say chat, and, and mine says number two because there's been two comments, and both of them, I believe, have been from Greg Grant. Um, but I think what you're going, you're trying to point out too is that the setback is incorrect on the drawing, the setback actually needs to go to the curb, so it's twenty-five feet on Grand, thirteen feet of the equestrian setback, and then an additional twelve feet of, Liz, your property. So essentially, the setback could be, if that's correct and it's twenty-five feet on each side, it could be pushed towards the street to line up with the curb edge.
Well, the, the, the clear language of the code says twenty-five feet each direction from the corner of the property, or twenty-five feet from the property line in each direction. So in that, in that case, that, that triangle there is accurately drawn. Whether we conclude that that's where it ought to be in this case is a separate question right now.
Right.
But I was, I was concerned that this, that this picture showed the northbound traffic on Lion as being farther north compared to Grand Avenue than, than, um, the stop line was. And if Greg, I'm Greg, I'm sorry, if Lucas, if you could flip back to that overhead, that aerial shot of the neighborhood with your alternative on it, I thought I saw a stop line there.
Yeah.
And it didn't look to me like it was in the same position as that little red oval. And I, and I don't know which is correct, I'm just trying to sort that out right now, so that we're all working from the same data.
You might be able to see it in my photographs.
Yeah, actually, let me go to one of the photographs. Actually, here, you can see the vehicle.
Yes.
There's the white line.
That, that, yeah, that car right there looks to me like it's set back several feet from the curb face along Grand.
It's four feet.
And that's what I was trying to understand.
Yeah, Lucas, if you pull up your overview shot, it shows the line, and it looks like it's, uh, um, lines up with the property.
Okay, let me, let me do stop share here for a second here and pull up the other.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, here's my point of view right now, and it looks even.
Okay.
Share screen.
So it sounds like the part of the, the issue is, in the code, it says the side triangle starts at the corner of the property line. In the permit that was granted, or at least in the second, in this other option, we're saying that the, um, thirteen-foot public right-of-way is part of the sight line. So I think that's something that we need, needs to be confirmed and established.
Yeah.
In addition to this.
Right.
Setback, those seem to be like the two areas where, where we need clarity.
And if you look at that.
Yeah, I, now, this, this looks like, this, looks to me like this is a stop line, and it is at the property line, not at the curb face on Grand.
Yeah, and that, that would.
Is that, is that a stop line?
There's not.
Right here?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Greg, can I chime in on this?
Great, Greg, please do.
Okay, terrific. Uh, yes, that stop bar is, it is not at the property line, it's, uh, because the property line is thirteen feet behind the curb, as mentioned, because of the, uh, some people refer to as an equestrian easement, it's thirteen foot behind, as we all know, that extra wide area behind the curb face. In this case, we, when there's a sidewalk, the stop bar is placed so a car stops and allows the pedestrian to proceed first, and then the car can advance forward for proper line of sight. So approximately four foot behind the curb face alignment on Grand is where that is. It's, it's somewhat close to the curb face, but it's four foot approximately behind, so four foot of the.
Okay, then, yeah.
Yeah.
Then I remain confused because it looks to me like that stop line is at the rear property line, not, which would make it.
And Chair Qualisi.
That means the rear property line is only four feet from the curb face on Grand, and we know that isn't the case.
And I think I can clarify that, Chair Qualisi, yes, on the left side of the drawing we're looking at, yeah, the, the rear yard is not, I think it's overstated, if you look to the right and be more accurate, you can see the decomposed granite, yes, where that, uh, pointer is now, that, that's the property line, and extends the same off to the west over there, so really, that just kind of shows better that the, the stop bar is really.
Okay.
Closer to the, the curb, yeah, it's the drawing that's incorrect.
So if, if the, yeah, all right, if the fence is thirteen feet from the curb face, then it's farther south than is shown on this drawing. Like nine feet farther south.
I agree.
Than is shown on this drawing.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Yeah, all right, and, um, if we could go back to the applicants or the appellant, excuse me, the appellant's chart number seven?
Hold on one second.
Yep.
Number seven, slide number seven?
Number seven, thank you. Okay, um, from, from this, uh, the, the implication that I get is that the, the structure that was permitted, and that is arguably eighty-eight percent complete, is only along the northern end of the property, is that correct? There is no fence, uh, construction at this point along the south end of the property?
That's correct, this, this appeal only really pertains to the grand yard app. The grand avenue yard, rather.
Okay, I, I, then I would ask, uh, of staff, I guess, did the original permit before the stop work, did that cover any fence work at the south end of the property?
Yes, it did. It included fencing along Summer and along, uh, Lion Street, and obviously the western boundary as well. And that was at a height of three.
Basically, the entire western boundary of the property, plus the north and south ends, plus some of the stuff on the east side?
Correct.
Okay, okay, but the, the, uh, construction at the south end of the property has not started?
That's correct, that'll be a different type of fence.
Okay. Different, what, okay, is, is there, is there an agreement already between the appellant and the city as to the height of the fence, uh, along the south side as opposed to the west side? Is the west side, I guess, by code, it's allowed to be six feet until you get some distance from the south boundary? And I don't remember whether that's twenty feet or forty feet, or what, can you enlighten us on that, Lucas?
It would be from the, from the edge of the building. When you have, when you have frontage and it's identified as a front yard area, it, that, that be, that six foot begins from the edge of the building.
Okay, okay, so.
So it would be reduced to three feet if it, if it traverses, like, for instance, if you see my little hand here, once it, once it makes that move towards Summer, here, this area along this edge, here, and here, that, all those areas would be a three-foot tall fence, because this is considered, um, with that zoning clearance, to be three feet in height.
The front yard, it's the front yard. Um, okay, I, I was curious, because, uh, I've, I've walked around the property several times, and I've walked up and down Summer Street, and all the other properties to the west of this one, um, appear to have their front yard on Grand, and the backyard on Summer, and it's all six-foot fences, if it's not, uh, actual buildings or whatever, all along that north side of Summer. Was that your impression as well when you walked the area?
Is that question directed to me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Not necessarily walking, driving up and down and riding my bike up and down that area along Grand, experiencing that space, I noticed, uh, that there are quite a few fences along that area that were three feet in height along Grand. I didn't pay as much attention to Summer.
Yeah, and six feet, and six feet along Summer, right, okay.
Right.
Um, okay. I, I don't think I have any more questions for the appellant. Does any other commissioner have a question for the appellant?
No.
Okay, then, um, we'll thank you, Liz, for your time, don't go away, because we may generate more questions. Um, but at this point, then, I think we need to open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone else out there in television land who wants to speak on this topic?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Lucas, I did not, um, get a chance to ask James, remember we discussed the three-feet issue for the front yard fence at the last, um, meeting when we went through the code? And I'm still under the impression that the city council changed that to four feet, I could be wrong. And the reason is, and the reason that I've been advocating for this increase in the height is because, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
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 Because I'm seeing this weird, oh, I see, that's my timer, oh, okay. The three, a three-foot fence will not keep a medium-sized or a large dog in the yard. A dog can jump it, and there can, you know, that is a health and safety issue. And, um, for that reason, I advocate allow, you know, a change from three feet to four feet, um, in the code, and I don't know if had, if, Lucas, you said it hasn't been adopted, but I know that it was discussed extensively, I know that. Um.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it had been adopted, it, four feet, uh, with a five-foot setback.
And even the setback was changed, because if you go all over Ojai, uh, people like myself with a very small front yard, if we have a five-foot setback, there's hardly any yard left. Now, my, my understanding is that it can go right up to the, uh, public right-of-way. And you see that already all over Ojai, dozens of houses have their fence on the, uh, they don't have a setback at all, you know, it's all, it's, you know.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so.
From that point of view, most of Ojai is non-conforming, but I'll agree with you, you do see it everywhere.
Yeah, it's non-conforming. Um, so I, and I'm going to be very careful not to say anymore, I have other thoughts. I have other thoughts, because just in case this comes to the city council, I don't want to appear that I'm prejudiced. So I'll stop now, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Liz, if, if you're unfamiliar with all the players in the cast here, that's, uh, city council member Souza Francina. She is liaison to the planning commission for this quarter, I believe. So she'll be speaking again before the end of the meeting.
Good to meet you.
Okay. Um, any more questions for the appellant? And no, oh, we've, we've gone past that. Uh, any other comments from the public? Uh, hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing-
Chair Quillis, hold on one second. Pause for a second here. It sounds like we have two, we have two comments that have come in, um, and individuals that would like to speak on this matter.
Okay, are these too duplicative of the nine emails that you got?
I'm not sure. Uh, that I'm not sure of.
Okay, well, it's quite, I guess it doesn't matter either way. Let's, uh, let's pick these people up. If, if you know who they are and you can call them out to, uh, come one at a time to, um, to speak to us, let's please do that now.
Okay, I've enabled the speaking for someone who called in on the phone. It's seven-nine-four-one-zero, and I can't see the last. Would you like to speak?
Oh, gosh. Oh, sorry.
Yep, okay. If you would, please identify yourself and, uh, tell us your thoughts, please. Whoever's out there at that cell phone number, seven-nine-four-ten-twenty-eight, um, you are on live. Please talk to us. Hello?
Oh, that's too bad.
Yeah.
Okay, the one other person is Kyle Von Helsing.
Oh, Kyle, okay.
I'm not sure.
Yes, alright.
I don't think he's-
Uh, Kyle, go ahead. You have three minutes to give us your thoughts.
I don't think, that's my husband, but I don't think that he needs to comment. He must have just been in the system for some reason, because he was in an appellate.
Oh.
Okay, sorry, we'll disable his talking.
Well, that's, that's fine then. Um, do we have any more members of the public who wish to speak on this issue?
Those aren't the only two members of the public.
Hearing none? Then I am closing the public hearing, and we're coming back to deliberation by the commission. Um, and let's start, um, Vice Chair Nolan, your thoughts?
Yes, um, so I think that where I, um, I'm having a little issue, and I would like clarification before we move forward is to establish the, where the line of sight, the twenty-five-foot setback, or line of sight takes place, is it at the corner of the property? Property line corners, or is it at the corner of the curb at the intersection? Um, is that number one? And then number two, clarity on the twelve-foot setback that is the alternate proposal on Lion Street? Is that in fact, um, true? Or where do we find that in the code so we could have a little clarity on that? So those are the two things that I find to be the main issues.
Okay, uh, Lucas, can you, or Greg, there you go.
Great, if you'd like me to answer that first question, I will.
That's fine, you can, Greg, you can answer that first question. I'll answer the second one.
Yeah, the, uh, twenty-five-foot dimension is from the curb face, which is clear on Grand. So on Grand, it would be curb face, thirteen foot to the property line, and then it'd be twelve foot beyond that. Uh, and then from the Lion Street side, there's no curb, so the code says, uh, six feet off of the travel lane. So it would be, uh, approximately, uh, let me see, because there's no curb face there, just wanted to clarify that. It would be from the centerline shown out there, uh, twenty-five plus eighteen. So, let's try to do a little math on my-
You're saying that Lion Street right-of-way is forty-three?
Uh, it's actually fifty foot, and then it's, so, uh, it would be five, and it'd be, um, thirteen, eighteen, so approximately eighteen foot beyond the, uh, edge of pavement. So that's a little trickier to figure out, but it's, uh, it's, anyway, it's, uh, it would be closer. That one actually is not, since there's no curb there, it pushes it out into the street a little bit, that twenty-five-foot measurement. It'd be approximately nineteen feet behind the, uh, edge of pavement from Lion Street.
So it's twenty-five and-
And where?
Yeah, getting confused.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, if you-
But now that's, see, that shows twenty-five feet from the property line, not the curb face.
Hmm, right.
Right, but if you actually read the code, in code section, uh, yeah, residential property line, maybe that's why the confusion was in that chart. But the section nine-three-point-five-five-nine clarifies where that intersection visibility is defined from.
Oh, you had it right there, you had the text. Just above that figure three-two. Can you share that text again?
Yes.
And one more, one more subsection up? No, uh, that-
Scroll back down.
You've gone too far now. I, I thought I saw it there, I thought I saw twenty-five feet. Yeah.
Alright, it's right there.
Oh, there was a different twenty, that was a twenty-five foot.
Yeah, if you can advance that upward, I think on the screen, we can't see the diagram completely.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Twenty-five feet from the intersection of the extension of the two property lines.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, there's another code section that conflicts with that, but it appears to be that's for, the, I'm sorry, this would be, would be applicable for this residential area. I was confused, this, it is twenty-five foot from the property. Sorry.
This, and this is just what was done at, at two-fourteen West Aliso. That, I don't, what they call it, the well or sage, or, I don't know.
Oh, sure, yeah, you're right.
That place, it used to be the nunnery.
Right.
Right, okay.
I should also preference-
Look in a different code section.
Yeah, Greg, hold on one second. I should also preference, Sherri, can you pull that up again? I just want to identify, I know Chair Quillis had read one portion of that code section, but I think the sentence or the, the- Can you pull that up again? Um, no, leave it right where it's at. It's, sub, subsection F reads, "A corner cutoff intersection visibility area is a triangle measured as follows, and may include private property and/or public right-of-way." I think that's where Greg is, is, is pointed to, to say that it could include both.
So that, that conflicts a bit with the, with the diagram.
Precisely. The, the diagram is being provided as a, as a visual reference, but it is not, but it is not all-inclusive. There are, the, there is that language wording that we're looking at here to make sure it matches up.
Okay, so as we, as we look at this corner, this being the corner of the property in question, with Lion on the left and Grand on the bottom.
Right.
Um, then, then we say, okay, the curb face is thirteen feet back to the property line, and if we had twenty-five, then it'd be another twelve feet. Um, but the question remains, uh, what are the, what are the practical sight li- in my mind, what are the practical sight lines here? If the stop bar, as, uh, Greg Grant referred to it, uh, our public works director, if that is actually four feet from the curb face on Grand, um, then you're already the front nine feet of the car that is on northbound Lion Street stopped at Grand. The front nine feet of that car is already unobstructed because it is at or north of the property line, and the fence is originally permitted. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and that front nine feet of any car, um, I think will always include the driver, unless it's a really strangely shaped car. And that would say to me that if a northbound car on Lion is stopped at the stop bar, um, that there is no, there is no, uh, barrier to observing eastbound traffic on Grand, except insofar as there are cars parked along Grand on that south side. Is that fair to say?
I would agree with that, right. I would agree that cars, a separate issue. Uh, the possibility of, uh, of dealing with cars is a totally separate issue from what we're talking about.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, uh, right, exactly. Uh, but the, but if, if a car northbound on Lion stops at the stop bar, then the fence does not, the fence as currently proposed does not impede the view of eastbound traffic on Grand. Parked cars might, but the fence won't.
I agree.
Okay. Um, and, and I'm still, I'm still struggling with, with the, the position of the north-south fence along Lion at the north end of the property. Um, I, the twelve, the twelve-foot measurement that we saw in, uh, in, uh, CDD manager Luca, uh, Lucas's overhead shot, um, didn't give me, uh, an understanding of where the twelve feet was being measured from that was setting back the fence. And then, uh, Mr. Grant talked about eighteen feet or nineteen feet, and, and that was from the edge of pavement, is that right?
That's, that's correct.
And, and where, and where is the fence? Where are the current fence posts compared to edge of pavement? Do, do we have that data?
You're talking about the, the fence that currently is up in its frame, in its framing stage?
The framed, yeah, the current framed fence.
Yeah, the fence is up to the property line.
What is that setback from edge of pavement?
From edge of pavement, um, along Grand Avenue, it's setback thirteen feet. From edge of pavement, uh, edge of pavement along Grand.
Edge of pavement along Lion. I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied personally that the fence is, is close enough or far enough from Grand Avenue not to cause a problem with that east-west piece of fence. But I'm now concerned about the north-south piece of fence that runs along Lion. Where is that compared to edge of pavement?
In terms of the distance from edge of pavement along Lion? The-
Yeah.
I don't have the exact number for what that would, what that would be. It's probably in the neighborhood and is, is Liz still?
Yeah, Kyle's measuring it right now, actually.
That's what we-
Oh, good, okay. That's, that, that's certainly useful data for me.
Thanks.
Chair Quillis?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, uh, Vice Chair Nolan, um, I'm wondering, this would be directed to, uh, the public works director, Greg Grant. Is it possible for you to do a quick sketch? I know it wouldn't be necessary to scale, but for you just to write in this measurement that you're doing on Lion Street? And if I'm understanding it correctly, are we all in agreement that the site triangle is starting at the corner of the intersection at the curb face of Grand and Lion and not at the property line? Is that correct?
Well, the code says may include public, public right-of-way, so-
Right, so at that-
I think it's within our power to say it does.
Okay, and we, and at some point, maybe we will all, we'll discuss that and come to a conclusion. But I'm just wondering, just for clarity, um, Liz, basically, right now, if I'm understanding it correctly, the fence posts that exist presently are located on your property line, or close enough to your property line right now. And what we're trying to get right now is, is the, um, determination from the street, which has to do with the relationship to the public right-of-way. And that's where I'm wondering if just a real, you know, even if it's on the back of a scratch paper, that you could draw that intersection, the property line, and just write in, you know, the thirteen feet for the public right-of-way on Grand, whatever it is on Lion. So we can just kind of, I want to make sure I can fully understand the information right now.
If I could answer that, uh, Commissioner Nolan, I was realizing, looking at the street view, that there is an edge of pavement that matches the curb to the south. There's no, there's no curb from Grand, but it does start partially down their property. So really, uh, it's the more standard approach throughout the city where there is approximately five foot left behind the curb face to the property line, and where the fence is approximately, or was before, I'm not sure where it was rebuilt, but it previously was approximately five foot behind the curb. So that would take that twenty-five-foot measurement from the approximated curb face that we can project along Lion Street. So it's really twenty foot behind, I think, where they've rebuilt the fence. As long as, uh, I guess we could ask the applicant, is the, is the new fence built in the same location as the previous fence?
No, the previous fence was actually built, uh, in the public right-of-way. So I did a survey and relocated it onto private property. So the new-
How far that approximately shifted it?
I'm sorry?
You know how far that approximately shifted it into your property?
It approximately two feet on the northeast corner of the property, and that increased as you traveled south. So it shifted a little over six feet, um, in the, as you got to the southern.
As you got close to the house?
Exactly, yeah.
Correct, and the commission actually has, uh, a copy of that, um, survey within their packet.
No, thank you, no offense.
Right, because it was included.
It, it identifies, and Liz is correct, on the south side, about six and a half feet is what it encroached into. It ranged from about four and three-quarters of a foot, four feet and almost three-quarters of a foot, all the way up to six and a half feet. And then on the northeast side of, of her property, um, it ranged from a little over two feet almost to that corner edge of Grand and Lion all the way out to about, it was almost five feet. It's identifying about four-point-eight-five feet.
So this is page twenty-
So this is-
Thirty-seven, the legal survey.
Page twenty, okay. That shows the old, the old fence running outside the property line, and you, and Liz, you have brought the fence back to along the property line?
Correct, it's just inside the property line now.
Just inside.
Okay. Right, so it seems-
Okay.
What we still need then is, uh, Lucas, we need this clarification about the setback, the twelve-foot setback that you proposed as a possible solution. Is that in, where is that in the code so that we could have a better understanding of that in our decision-making process?
So in our, in our code it identifies twelve feet, but it does not identify it as a street-side setback. It is simply a twelve-foot setback. And I would remind the commission that these setback requirements as, as structures may be, may be identified are minimums. Um, the, the, the addition to that is, as what Chair Quillis had mentioned earlier, interior lots are not held to that, that same standard or interpretation. Um, so what I was applying here was a, a pharyllitis test to that setback requirement for the street side at twelve feet, um, as a minimum.
Would you be able to either, um, direct us in the packet if we happen to have that key?
No, the, the section that, yeah, the, uh-
Or, or put it up on the screen?
Yeah, the section that we're talking-
It sounds like it's part of Attachment D. It sounds like it's part of Attachment D. Is that right?
Hold on. No, we don't have eight oh five in here. I'm not seeing it.
Attachment D, page four and five talks about side setbacks, uh, at least how to measure them.
Correct.
But I don't see the standards. Uh, page six has allowed projection into setbacks. Page seven has the distance between structures. But I don't see the standard for side, for side setback per se.
Yeah, I don't think it's in here, unless it's somewhere else in the code.
It's, uh, was it eight oh five?
So eight oh five is the other code section, which I'm momentarily here pulling up.
Oh, good, yeah.
Hold on one second.
I don't mean to interject, could I offer a piece of code for your consideration? This was something I came across that I thought was applicable. It's ten dash two dot eight oh four. And it said that required setback areas shall not be occupied by structures other than, and I, under that section, says the fences, walls, and hedges allowed by section ten dash two eight oh five, which is the fence section of code. And I interpreted that as meaning that fences could occupy setback areas where they were required.
What, what's the subsection again, eight oh four, what is it?
Eight oh four, so eight oh four E one I.
Right, I think the question is not that necessarily, but the fact that this isn't an interior lot. It says, uh, you know, when the property line faces the street, so it's kind of an unusual situation. And I, and I'm, but I want to acknowledge what you said, but I think that's why Lucas is looking for, um, ten dash two point eight oh five, which, where he believes there'll be some language about the street application.
And I, I want to-
Yeah, eight oh, eight oh five looks like it only talks about maximum height, not setback.
Right.
I think with what Liz is saying with eight oh four, they're talking about setbacks from the house, the building. The only thing that can live within those setback requirements is the fencing. And then the fencing has its own-
Right.
Which-
Eight oh four E one I, yeah.
Right.
So fencing and walls have height requirements, but they don't necessarily, they can live, they can sit inside the setbacks.
So that's not the issue. I think the issue is right now is that-
Where'd that twelve feet come from? I'm, I'm not sure.
I don't even have an issue, but it's, it's the question, if we look at that proposal that you're, your proposal that you made with the twelve-foot setback, where did that come from?
Now, there is one section in, uh, section ten dash two dot eight zero five. Um, it is F three, and it says fences and walls shall be set back a minimum of five feet from public rights-of-way and shall be landscaped, subject to the approval of the director.
So five feet rather than twelve?
And mind you, it says a minimum of five feet. Now, I would also preface that with table two dash three, Residential District General Development Standards, which is ten two four oh four, Residential Zoning District General Development Standards. In there, it identifies setbacks. And in there, it identifies side setbacks. And it identifies twelve feet and it says for access and five feet, um, for the other side. So there are two different distinctions here in the code. I was applying the twelve-foot, um, setback distinction. And here, there is that, also that fences and walls being peeled back a minimum of five feet from the public right-of-way. And mind you, that is a minimum setback requirement. That is not just the standard. It could be more.
And that, I believe, is for, you know, for sidewalks, et cetera, for people walking.
Exactly. Right, so I, I mean, I'm not, I'll defer to you, Lucas, but to me, it makes the most sense that we look at the five-foot setback from the public right-of-way for the position, or, you know, depending on how we go with this, but for our discussion. Whereas the twelve-foot one is typically the standard setback for, you know, the twelve and five, for example, for an interior lot. In other words, on an interior lot, you put the, the fences, like typically on the property line. You could choose where you want it, but that's where most people do it. But it's not obligatory that you put it twelve feet from your property line on an interior lot.
Well, yeah. And in fact, on the, on the, uh, overhead shot that Lucas provided earlier, the setback at the south end of the property appeared to be five feet. Or did I miss that?
Along summer, you mean?
Along summer and along Lyon at the south end of the property.
Correct.
That was five feet, but at the north end of the property, it was twelve.
But the fence is only three feet on the south part of it.
That is correct. That was the difference in the distinction. Seeing a taller fence meant a further setback.
But, but, okay, but the twelve-foot, that's, that's the side setback, but that doesn't say, that's not saying that fences can't go there, is it? I don't see anything that says fence.
No, it says the scent, it says the scent, it says the fence can go in the setback area.
That's what I thought, yeah, so. No, it, it sounds like, if I'm understanding this correctly, the existing posts that have gone in with the permit are, and, and maybe Liz, you can clarify it. I know you mentioned it a couple of minutes ago. You said you actually placed them inside the property line. I don't know if it's, you know, two inches-
Not much inside, I think, yeah.
Yeah, probably just over, which, you know, which is normal. Um, and then I guess the question is, is there five feet between the property line and the pub right-of-way? I'm looking at the survey and, um, it's hard to say for sure where the, you know, where you're putting the new fence. Is there a, let me just look at this.
Are you going for a sidewalk to run?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is five feet.
There, the sidewalk runs, um, along, there, on the north side, and then it best turns the corner. So you can kind of see the trajectory and the angle, and there would be room for it to run between the fence and the pavement of the street.
Because unfortunately, the survey sometimes will show, um, you know, the curb or the street width and an additional public right-of-way, but, but all we have is the full public right-of-way with no definition on the survey. So that's why I'm asking the question, just trying to become a little more clear. Yeah, so, all right, so if we understand this correctly, we have presently, the posts are on the, let's just say, on the property line or a little bit inside, estimated, which we don't have in front of us, but five feet into the public right-of-way, and then the street starts.
Yes.
Okay, and that's on Lyon Street?
Correct.
Okay.
If, if, yeah, if a sidewalk were put in next to the fence along Lyon at the north end of the property, that sidewalk would be in the public right-of-way. It would be in that fifty-foot right-of-way.
Yes.
Is that right, Greg?
Yes, that's correct.
And is that, is that the way these things are normally done?
Yes.
That the sidewalk is in part of the public right-of-way?
Uh, the, the sidewalk is uh, always in the public right-of-way. It's highly unusual to be outside. So the, the Lyon Street appears to have the relatively standard approach of, uh, the pavement to a curb and then the sidewalk tight to the curb. In this case, is more common. Sometimes we have a parkway, but in this case, it would commonly be in that area tight, yeah, tight to the curb.
I think, I think the curb on the east side of Lyon is, is actually a curb. I don't know whether it's twenty-five feet from the center line, uh, but there is actually curb and, uh, not necessarily sidewalk, but curb there on the east side. And if the curb were twenty-five feet on the other side of the center line, that would be right up against the fence. And so that's my question. Is, is the sidewalk going to fall within the fifty-foot right-of-way that is Lyon Street?
Yes, it will. Yeah, we'll make sure that it does. It is a little unusual the way it's laid out there, but yes, uh, typically, we have a fifty-foot right-of-way, as in Lyon Street. Forty-foot curb to curb, and then that's four, that leaves five foot behind the curb for the sidewalk, and that's exactly what you'll see across the street. Uh, is that four, four and a half foot sidewalk right behind a six-inch curb. That's what, the very common section throughout the city.
Um-
So, so the question in my mind is if we're going to have, if, if we're going to have, uh, a five-foot setback of the fence, do we need to have it from the property line, or do we need to have it from where the curb face might be if there actually were a sidewalk? And I think it's the latter, but I'm, I'm not clear on it yet.
And, and a brief, a brief bit of history there is that, uh, you know, I think that's a, a hot discussion item that has been considered for discussion by a planning commission and the council, is that, uh, currently, as code exists, it's five foot behind the limit of the public right-of-way. But there are obviously a lot of fences that have been built historically throughout the city that are tight to the public right-of-way. But the code says five foot behind.
Greg, but Greg, isn't that, I thought the five-foot setback was for front yards and fences.
I'm gonna pass that one to Lucas, so he would know better.
It's from the street, so if it is a side yard, that would be applicable as well.
So any street, okay.
Yeah, not interior, obviously.
Was, was the, uh, I just, just a side question too. So was the applicant ever encouraged to apply for variance? Because, I mean, there, well, we may be able to find, um, maybe there's reason to make a judgment that this is okay, but I would, I would say that there certainly appears to me to be, um, substantial um, grounds for, for, uh, uh, supporting a variance as well, just.
They would have to go through that process.
Alternatively, yeah, alternatively, it could be, uh, done in terms of upholding the appeal in part, at least that part. That would effectively do the same thing as granting a variance without having to have another fee and another hearing. Is that correct?
Fee could be waived also, considering the, um, the-
Yeah.
Let's, let's, yeah, and let's consider for a moment the differences between what we're talking about tonight. Now, mind you, it is a, it is a hearing that we're having tonight. Um, and so what is the difference between what we're having tonight in terms of a discussion and potentially a determination at the end of this versus a variance? So here, it is a public hearing and there are, there are certainly quite a bit of information that's being provided and a determination's rendered. Who's to say in five years that, I'm not saying that Liz and Kyle are leaving us, but it changes hands, or twenty years from now. And, um, we're down that same path of looking at whether or not this, this fence, whatever the determination was, without the benefit of a variance. Uh, but the determination was made. That you're not looking back at the records, trying to scratch your head in terms of how it was determined. A variance, on the other hand, by going through that, which is discretionary, would you, would you, would provide you with that litmus test and the finite understanding of what was made and is a part of the record. This is also a part of the record in terms of revocation, uh, the zoning clearance that was provided. But the variance is, is definitive in terms of how the determination was made, and that doesn't go away. And that is used as a, as a benchmark for other properties of, of like situation. So I just wanted to make sure I was making that clear to the, to the commission tonight.
Okay, that, that, that says then there is a, uh, perhaps a more solid legal basis for least where it is. That's what you're saying?
Correct. Based on, based on staff's recommendation-
In a variance.
Right, based on staff's recommendation, um, as Attachment A, which would provide the, it both being considered a through lot and a corner lot where you have front yards being determined on all three sides, uh, of, of the streets that we're talking about here, so.
I mean, that alone, I think there's some other reasons, but that alone-
That-
It creates-
That would be most restrictive.
... unfair burden on this particular property, I would say.
Yeah. Amen.
Chair Quillisi?
Yeah, I, I, I could not handle, uh, Attachment A. I appreciate that it's there and it certainly is definitive, but I think it's, it's, um, a harsh resolution of, of the, of the issue. Commissioner Nolan, please.
Yes, um, and this is my opinion based on what we've looked at tonight. Number one, I am, um, in favor of upholding the code as far as the site, twenty-five-foot sightline on all properties in the city. Um, it does look like, and that's for safety, but it does look like we, as a commission, can make the determination if we want to extend that sightline to the curb inner, of the intersection, the corner of the intersection, um, where the curb is, or if we wanted to do it at the property line. Um, based on the permit that was issued, that I know is being rescinded or has been stopped. They initially did allow the thirteen feet of the public right-of-way to be part of that. So I'm, I'm kind of looking at some ideas here that I could go with that decision that it started at the corner. And uh, so the only modification the property owner would have to make would be to establish that twenty-five-foot, um, sightline. And it would really only, it would be twenty-five feet on Grand, starting at the corner of the intersection, so it wouldn't be a full twenty-five feet of your property line. And then the same thing down on Lyon. It would not be a full twenty-five feet because you're getting that, uh, it would be, you know, an additional twelve feet. It sounds like, if I'm understanding this correctly, the fences on the property line, there is enough room in the public right-of-way to add a sidewalk or a five-foot path if needed, or at some point in time, still maintain the width of the street. And I know that that would be, you know, a possible burden to create that sightline, in which case I would be open to suggesting that maybe this does go to city council and the property owners would be, they would come up with a solution for some sort of compensation. And, and that's a possibility if we want to do. But I, I'm really, um, kind of adamant about maintaining the sightlines and not deviating from that anywhere because I think it's so important. The other thing is we never know, um, if that public right-of-way, that thirteen feet, may at some point be, um, modified. I know that it's in our complete streets, um, implementation plan, uh, which is part of our circulation element, so something, you know, potentially could happen there as far as development. So I think that's crucial to keep that for safety. But I think there is a way to allow them to keep the majority of the fence and then possibly we come up with some solution for compensation to maintain that sightline. I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, okay, um, I, I sympathize in, in, um, in part with, with what you've said. I'm not sure, as we're measuring east and west along Grand, to determine where we have to cut off the corner of the fence. Where does the twenty-five feet along Grand get measured from?
Well, I was just proposing-
So we said, we said measuring north-south, the first thirteen feet of the twenty- So we said, we said measuring north-south, the first thirteen feet of the twenty-five is that, that, um, excess or whatever, it's that other right-of-way between the curb face and the property line. What, where, where do we measure on the east-west direction?
We'd start at the corner.
Where does that twenty-five feet come from?
Well, it sounds like we have an option per the code, and, and please, somebody correct me if I'm, I'm misunderstanding this. But in the code, it does specifically say to use the corners of the property line, but I think it was item F, I.
It says we may use, yeah, we may use public right-of-way.
So we could essentially go to the actual corner of the intersection where, let's just say the curb is on Grand, and I think it's a little unclear, but Greg Grant was trying to explain that to us earlier. But we go to where those two meet, so now we're taking advantage of the thirteen-foot, call it the equestrian trail, but that portion of public right-of-way. So.
Right.
You'd have to scale this off, you know, to be, come up with the accurate numbers of actually how much fencing on the corner of the pro, private property would have to be modified. So apparently what they could do is it'd be three feet there within the triangle. And, or the other option is, is to go outside or inside of the triangle and have it at six feet.
I agree with you on that. I'm saying when you're measuring from Lyon west to decide where the ed, where that corner of the triangle is at the west, northwest corner of the triangle, where is the east edge of the triangle? Where is that, where's twenty-five feet from that?
Right, so.
Is it out in the street? Is it in the dirt?
Unfortunately, the survey doesn't have, it just shows the public right-of-way with, you know, two outside edges. It doesn't show any of the elements like the easement or, you know, potential five-foot sidewalk or anything. So we, or do we have anything that does have that information? Because then we could actually, tonight, if we decide to go in the street and be able to direct uh, the appellant with actual numbers. It's hard to do it on the plan. Uh, and I'm not sure if even our plan is to scale because it may be a reduced plan, but I'm gonna grab a scale and see if I can figure it out.
Um, can I ask?
Page twenty appears to be to scale, yeah.
It's to scale, but it doesn't have the, um, the right-of-way broken up into the equestrian trail or a curb. So that's where I'm a little, um, you know.
Can I ask Greg Grant a question? There. Um.
Greg, still there?
Right, I'm here, yes.
Um, I, I, I'm, I'm getting, uh, I'm getting, uh, I'm losing track of where I am to find stuff in the code, but isn't there something in the code that says that the Director of Public Works can, um, don't you, is there something that says you can use your judgment about, um, whether there is a sight visibility or not? Corner, a corner cut back visi- visibility?
Yes.
Well, in fact, the staff report says that he was out there and was satisfied once once the issue of encroachment on the public right-of-way along, presumably along Grand, yes, uh, that he was satisfied. So.
Well, I.
Greg, what do you think?
Yes, and I, I would agree that the, uh, the code does state that, that, uh, that directors can provide, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a variance, but I'm forgetting the term. I think that, uh, Lucas had up the code previously.
Yeah, you have, you have some judgment on that.
Yes, right.
I mean, I, I've been out there, I looked at that pretty carefully, and I mean, that, that corner has more visibility than most in the downtown area.
I think like you were saying, because of that thirteen-foot setback, it's exceptionally, yeah, better.
If there's anything in the code that allows you to make a judgment about that, uh, and I, and I'm gonna say something further. I think, I don't know how long this twenty-five-foot thing has been in the code. And I know it apply, you know, it applies here as well as maybe the director's judgment. But, I mean, it is, I, I can't believe that we have a twenty-five-foot requirement for a town like this. Most cities have, have like a six or a seven-foot setback from the corner, from the street intersect, from the, um, intersection of the street, corners. And so, um, anyway, I, I just see it as really excessive. And I, I plan to bring this back when we get into the zoning code in depth. Um, but if there is, if there is a section of the code that allows for the Director of Public Works to exert, uh, a judgment on this, I, I mean, I'm perfectly fine with that in this ca, in this case.
I'm gonna make a comment about the, um, side, uh, twenty-five-foot sightline. Um, I, I, I personally think we should maintain it, and I'll tell you why. Um, first of all, I ride my bike every week. I go to Commerce Market, I go up Lyon, then I go down Grand to go home. I have come to that intersection with a car there at that corner, and I can't see who's coming around heading east on Grand. So I'm just saying that as a bike rider, I have a car, you know, and I walk.
Oh, you're coming up Lyon.
I've come, I'm going north on Lyon from the Commerce Market, I get to, to the corner and I want to turn right. But if there's a car, which has happened a couple of times, that's parked, you know, essentially. I'm doing, you know, I'm doing this, and then I'm waiting, a lot of times I go, I'm just gonna wait till the car goes, till I, I, I can tell and there's no sound. And the reason I think we need to be consistent about this is, and I know we're even talking about a little variation, not being consistent as to whether it's on the property line or the corner of the public right-of-way, you know, the street, rather, excuse me. Um, is that we do, our, our town is very eclectic. We have a lot of non-conforming things going on. We have hedges on corners where you can't see around if a car is coming. We're trying to make our town more walkable and bikeable and multimodal. And because we have so many different, you know, every neighborhood, some people, places have sidewalks, some places don't. Some people are abiding and they have the three-foot, uh, hedges and fences, other people have a ten-foot one. There's so much inconsistency, but it's not safe. And if you look at some of the traffic reports, which I have, you know, where somebody's getting hit on a bike, et cetera, a lot of times it's where those intersections are. So I don't want to make this onerous to, to this property owner. I would like to see us come up with a solution because I believe they followed what they were supposed to do when they got the permit. But I'm just looking at this broad structure, I don't, I don't want us to, you know, get so lenient on these intersections where we're now, we're kind of defeating the purpose of um, complete streets, which our city has adopted as a policy, and we're doing projects, et cetera, et cetera. It's all about safety. Um, so that's where I'm coming from on, on the, the twenty-five-foot sightline.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you on the twenty-five-foot sightline, but the instance that you just cited, um, Commissioner Nolan, uh, of going north on Lyon and then turning right to go east on Grand. Your complaint or, or your issue was with parked cars, which are not the responsibility of the fence. And so I'm asking you, in that, in that instance that you, that you described, was the fence blocking your view?
Um.
Cause it looked like the proposed fence roughly in the same place.
I'm referring to when the old fence was up, because right now they don't eat, they don't have the boards up, they just have the posts and the rails. But I recall.
Agreed.
I've been doing this for years, when the old fence was up, I couldn't always see, on the rare occasion on a Sunday, cause a lot of times on Sunday there's not that many cars out, that I couldn't. Um, and, and what I am proposing is, because it sounds like we can make this, uh, judgment and have some flexibility, is to say not to have the sightline start at the corner of the property where the two property lines intersect on Grand and Lyon, but to move it out where it sounds like we have the option to the street curb on Grand, and then it sounds like we were having a little question on, you know, what's going on in Lyon because there's not a curb there. But essentially, we're using that thirteen-foot right-of-way as part of the sightline. And it sounds like five feet of, uh, the, uh, public right-of-way on Lyon. So it's not, we're being lenient to the degree that we can.
Well, I, I have a quick.
Getting the sightline.
Okay.
I, I know that.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, I know the twenty-five is, is nothing new. I know that it's been around for a long time, and obviously the reasons, um, Commissioner Nolan brought up a safety visual, you know, make sure people don't get hit by cars or pedestrians get hit by cars or bikers get hit by cars because they can't see. Um, so there are other streets that run perpendicular to Grand. Do they have, what is the, what's the requirement on their, on their twenty-five-foot visual, visual space? Like I know Golden West, I know there's Fulton Street, I know there's other properties that have the same issue.
It should be the twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five feet everywhere, exactly.
Yeah, so I just figured about the.
The problem.
If we can, and within the code.
If I could respond to that.
Yeah.
Minute, uh, that, yeah, this issue has been raised, uh, frequently over the years, but the, and the determination was that existing encroachments into that code requirement for twenty-five-foot clear uh, would not, existing would not be enforced upon, was, would not be considered a violation. And then we'd be trying to avoid it in the future, but it, it's come up as a potential discussion item, and it really hasn't uh, been given a hard line beyond, uh, existing. If there is a safety concern, that we would enforce it, but if not, uh, significant safety concern, we would, we would not enforce it.
And is there, is there guidance on when that, where that twenty-five foot starts? Does it start at the property line, or does it start at the, um, the public right-of-way?
Well, yeah, the code provides that, and it does say, state, uh, it's at the curb. Uh, I'm sorry, it had an option to start at the curb face or start at the property line. And to, uh, and it is a significant amount of properties out there now. I would say, uh, extremely roughly that roughly half the property corners that you drive around town, you will find have these encroachments. And that, uh, as long as the stop bar is there and a car can pull up and, uh, get the line of sight at the stop bar, oftentimes it's not the vegetation in the way, it's the parking that's the issue.
Yeah, and, and, uh, John, keep in mind, when an ordinance is written, unless it specifically is retroactive to a date certain, it governs future development, not what's out there. Everything that's existing is automatically grandfathered.
Got it.
That's why most, most of the corners in town have been there for uh, since before Title X was rewritten in two thousand and four.
Right.
And that's why you see so many non-conforming things, and they are then designated legal non-conforming.
Exactly, thank you.
I think the difference here is this, this appellant took down the, the old fence in its entirety and is putting up a new structure. I think that, that is probably one legal point that makes this a little different. Um, that said, my inclination, at least as I look at what's there, try to figure out what are the sightlines for a car pulled up to the stop bar, uh, and recognizing that this is one of perhaps three or four properties out of, what, maybe three thousand in the twenty-five hundred in the city? I would, I would personally be inclined to leave the new fence where it is. Because I don't think that there is a visibility problem at that northeast corner of the property. So. Who else wants to opine here? Or make a motion?
I'll make a motion. If everyone's okay.
Okay.
Right, um, I'll make a motion that we reestablish the twenty-five-foot sightline to be at the curb on Grand and the estimated curb on Lyon. Um, that the fence that's existing, the fence posts remain as is, um, excluding the, the small portion that falls within the sightline. And that the appellant has the opportunity either put a three-foot fence within that small portion of the sight triangle or a six-foot fence that's, you know, right on the border of, on the interior border of the sight triangle.
Okay, and just for clarity, then you're saying this, the fence that you're proposing to allow has two forty-five-degree corners on it, one of which along Grand is approximately twenty feet from the current corner of the fence, and the one along Lyon approximately twelve feet from the exist, from the corner of the proposed fence.
Correct.
And that that five, that that twelve by twenty by whatever triangle
Right.
Um, either be fenced off along the long edge at six feet or along the existing edges but at three feet?
Correct.
Or both? I don't care.
Yeah, I think, I think you restated it. And then whatever, the remaining fence that's six feet on Grand and the remaining fence that's six feet on the property on Lyon remain as is. And I would also.
Okay.
My motion that, um, this would have to be determined, but, um, compensation to the, uh, appellant for having to make that change be, um, I'm not sure of the correct language here, but essentially we'd go to city council for a determination, uh, for compensation.
Yeah, cause Planning Commission doesn't have a budget.
No, so they would have to do that, but that would be, that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Um, I'll second that. I agree with the staff recommendation on the alternative der- determination. Um, and I agree with Commissioner Nolan on the. Can you hear me?
Oh, the, yeah, the alternative was pushing twelve feet back from the edge of Lyon.
Well, that I.
The, the motion says leave the Lyon fence along the property line.
Right, I say leave the Lyon fence along the property line, I apologize, correction there. And then make the start of the twenty-five-foot visual triangle at the curb versus the property line.
Yep.
And I also like the idea.
Okay.
Council for potential, uh, reimbursement of any, um, any damages or repairs.
Okay, um, I'd like to make an alternative motion. And that is to thank staff for its diligence in finding these, this error and bringing it to the attention of the Planning Commission. But that we allow the six-foot fence to remain where it is currently placed in the ground. That is not cutting off any triangle at the corner because in my opinion, the, the practical effect of the sightline or visibility triangle has been achieved. So that's my motion. And, um, is there a second?
I'll second. Yeah, I, I'm seconding because, because the Director of Public Works is able to find that there's, um, that there's visibility and, uh, and I, I mean, I was over there on my bicycle today. And I went around the property several times. I, I turned left, I came back around, I turned right, I turned left to get back on the Grand. And, um, I didn't have any trouble seeing anything, and I don't, I'm trying to imagine with the boards in place.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I'm willing to, I, I'm ready to second your motion, Steve, so I don't know what happens.
So. I don't know, uh, here, here we are with, with a motion, an alternative motion. What do we do? Uh, this is the, is this city attorney or representative here?
Yeah, so if there are multiple motions in front of a body, the, the, the rule is that the vote should proceed on the, first on the last motion that was made, so the most recent motion. And then on to the, the prior motion.
Uh, if the, if the most recent motion fails, uh, which it would in a tie, I guess, then we proceed to the original motion, and if it fails. Then we proceed to the original motion and if it fails on a tie, then where are we?
So, in the event of a tie here, the original, um. The original ruling, the original staff decision stands because there's no, there's no decision on, from the, uh, commission.
Oh, there's no, okay, no, no, um, no approval of the appeal from the commission.
That's correct.
Okay, so we, so folks, we have, uh, unfortunately, we have an even number of commissioners. Um, and we have one, one motion to basically, uh. Completely approve of the appeal, the other motion to approve the appeal in part. And require that a triangle roughly twelve by twenty feet. Um, be removed from the northeast corner of the fenced property. Or be outside the fence. Is that correct?
With an option for the appellant to either put a three-foot fence going to the corners of the property line of Grand and Lion. Or the six-foot fence on the inside long end of the triangle within their property.
And members of the commission, I'm sorry, I just have one more caveat to my, uh, pre- our analysis on a tie. A tie, as I mentioned, is an effective denial of the appeal. The commission also has the oper- has the right to continue the planning commission until. There's a fifth member, which I believe would be two meetings from now. There's also that, so just, just, I. My answer.
Might be, might be two meetings from now. We've, we've had, uh, a month or more waiting for the fifth commissioner to be nominated. And I haven't heard anything. I don't know if anybody else has either.
Yeah, we've, we've had a nomination and it's scheduled for August twenty-sixth, or twenty-fifth for council approval. Um, and if I could just quickly, I wanted to, uh, make one, uh, statement, cause I heard, uh, someone said that, uh. The Public Works Director has determined that there's no visibility issue and I do want to state, I don't, I have not understood that that is the case. I think. The part of the staff report that was referred to as a Public Works Director Determination was that it wasn't an encroachment. Onto the public right of way, not that it was not a visibility issue.
Right, okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Vega.
Hey, wait a minute, can I ask? Okay, I, I, I had to walk away for a minute, so I might have missed, uh, some of the, what Greg said. But I, I thought he said there is a, there is a, um. A, a, uh, provision in the code. That grants the Director of Public Works to determine the visibility, the adequacy of the visibility for the corner cutback. And that he, and he said that it, he thought that it was, um, that it was adequate. Is that, is that?
Separate from the issue of parked cars, yeah.
And as, aside from the parked cars, which, and parked cars from the other year. I, I mean, let me just say again. Um, you know, most communities have a corner cutback from the street intersection of. Seven feet. That's very common. And, and I just think that, I mean, I know it's in the code, it's the rule, the way it is now. But twenty-five feet just is like, I don't know, it really excessive in my opinion. And, and especially for a town like this, we're not, we're not a subdivision in, um, Thousand Oaks. And, um, and I, I think that to some extent, uh, a, a small, uh, you know, a smaller. Corner cutback. Contributes to traffic slowing because you can't slam up to the intersection and just go because you can see everything. You get, you've got such great visibility, you don't even have to stop. You have to actually go up, you have to kind of go slow, stop it. And then, and then inch up, check directions and then you can go. And I, I mean, to me, there is an element. This is just my opinion, there's an element of, um, traffic slowing involved with that and, and so that combined with. With Greg Grant's, um, assessment of the adequacy of the visibility. I, 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 I don't know, I feel pretty comfortable. But, um, Kathy, I did have, can I ask you one question? So, so I'm looking at this picture, I don't know if you. Um, okay, so how much of, I don't know what the distance is between those two. Between the fence post from the first corner. Do you think, you think that, I mean, it's like. The applicant might know, is that eight feet maybe between fence posts from the corner post?
That's pretty standard.
Eight is standard, so it's probably, you know, give or take, but. So do you, so is that yours? See what you're trying to show me. Oh, sorry. Usually, they're usually like eight feet. So it's nothing about, not that many fence posts having to be rem- potentially removed or relocated. They may be able to just leave them there and do it at three feet, so you maintain the sight line. Is that kind of what your question is? Oh, my question, yeah, I mean, if they wanted to keep the six feet, do you think, does it look like it would be just a matter of. Making the, taking out this, the, the corner post and putting it back, so it's in line with that, the next. Post. No, it would be a little bit different, it'd be a little bit more, it'd be more than that. It'd probably be like two posts and maybe two or three on one side and two on the. Lion Street. They'd have to get, you know, there might, the spacing might have to change a little bit to accommodate for this.
In, in that, yeah, in that picture that Commissioner Lottis was holding up for us all to see. There is a little gray arc in the lower right-hand corner. Is that the curb?
Oh, I see what you're talking about, yeah. It looks like a curb, but I don't think it is the curb. I don't think it is, but I don't. Something else that looks like a curb. What it is. Yeah, it's hard to tell, it's a small picture. Anyway.
That is the code, Chairman. It's, it's where the, it's where the, um. Sidewalk turns, it runs along the north side of the property on Grand and then it, that turns the corner there. And then abruptly ends on Lion Street.
It is the curb then. That is the curb face from Grand that curves around onto Lion?
Correct.
Right, that's a, a curb ramp, they call it, you know, that's. Right, it's, it's an ADA compliant, uh, or it was when it was built anyway. And. So that actually does.
Oh, it's, it's a, okay.
It's, so it's an ADA ramp and it's meant to match the approximate alignment. If you go further down line, approximately eighty feet. There is a curb down there, which I believe is still there, it's in the street view at least at this point, not even eighty feet, probably, yeah, that's forty-five.
Yeah, I'm looking at it on Google Maps right now, yeah. So if you did put a sidewalk in there, it would go be, is there room behind the curb? There's room to go down Lion, I'm looking at it right now. There is room.
Yes, I think there is too, that's Greg talking, I believe so. Especially now that the, uh, fences moved back with that survey a little further back even, yeah.
Right, because this is out into the public right of way. The one I'm looking at on, uh, Google Maps in, um. An elevation view is the old fence, you know, projecting into the public right of way.
The old one was encroaching onto the side.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and you can see it on, and, and that's what I was referring to when I was mentioning the part about being on a bike. Um, and if there was a truck or, you know, a large vehicle parked on Grand, you know, it was a little bit harder to see.
But that was the fault of the parked car, not the fence.
Yeah, no, but unfortunately. We can't, we can't predict who's going to park there or what size vehicle's going to go down Grand and Lion. I'm just looking at it from a safety perspective.
Oh. I, I agree with you on the public safety, but I'm saying if there are parked cars there.
Right.
What does it matter where the fence is?
I'm talking about the, if the, there's a six-foot fence in the site triangle. That's what I'm referring to, not the entire length of the fence.
No, I, I agree with you and I'm saying if there are parked cars along Grand close to Lion.
Right.
Then, then what does it matter where the fence is? Because it's the parked cars that are blocking your view, not the fence.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Well, the triangle would help with pedestrians.
Yes.
And bikes.
Right. And this is a school route, uh, for Topa Topa Elementary and a lot of the other schools that are going like to Matilaha. We've done studies and, you know, students and parents and teachers, uh, with, uh, student traffic. Whether the walking, biking or going in a car.
Market is also popular.
Yeah, yeah.
Walking, sure, right at the other end of Lion, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that is true, the Grand is, uh, yeah, that's, we want to create that as our. Uh, one of the primary bike ways. It's kind of an alternative to, uh, oh, you know, it's kind of like the north route we've been calling it. As opposed to Ojai Avenue, but it definitely collects, uh, connects to Topa Elementary, also to Sarzoti Park. Um, yeah, so it, that's kind of where I'm coming from on the sight line for this, this specific property. And actually, to be consistent, it is in the code, to be consistent throughout the city where we can. And I do know that we've got a lot of, you know, non-conforming corners, but, you know, we have to. So that, that, that doesn't diminish my, um, desire to revisit the twenty-five feet, however. Um. I, I think the importance of the biking on Grand. Um, is a significant factor and, um.
The biking on Grand is on the paved part of the street, not in that thirteen-foot setback.
Right, but I'm, I mean, in terms of, in terms of kind of elevating, uh, safety and visibility. Yep, that's where I'm coming from on it.
Yeah.
And walk, not just biking, but it's a walkable route. Well, you know what?
Okay.
I may, I may be willing to, um, change my vote and go with the first motion. Um, because I think this may be going to council anyway and, um, in terms of, if you have to make a change to the fence. And, uh, maybe they can re, re, reevaluate it as well.
Okay, well, according to the city attorney, we need to, uh, vote on the second motion first.
You can also.
And I, I think we've about exhausted this and, and, and call the question. Um, Sherry, can we have a roll call on the second motion? That is to leave the fence where it was originally permitted.
Chair Quillisi?
The city attorney wanted to say something and I want to hear it.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
Sorry, what did you have to say?
Oh, no, I, I just wanted, y- you also, you can also withdraw your motion. There's no, if, i- i- um, if there's two motions on the table. You vote with the, the one that, that's most recent gets voted on, but you also can withdraw any motion that you wish to, um, at any prior.
Well, if, if it looks, if it looks like there are three votes in favor of the first motion. Uh, then I will withdraw the second, I guess. Um, and what we're talking about is having forty-five degree corners in this fence at twelve feet. South of the current corner of the lot and twenty feet west of the current corner of the lot, right? And, and with the proviso that the commission recommends, that the appellant. Uh, ask for compensation from the city for whatever rebuilding costs are involved in. Doing that.
Correct.
Okay, well, I will withdraw the second motion and, uh, Sherry, let's have a vote on, let's have a roll call on the first motion.
Chair Quillisi?
No.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, three to one, the motion passes. And, um, I will leave it to the planning department and the appellant to move forward with. With, uh, directions on, on how to, how to make the fence conform. To the, um, design that we just voted on. And, uh, I thank you all for your time. I'm, I'm really pleased that, that the staff was. Was unequivocal about saying, we did that one wrong, we need to take it back up with appropriate reviewing authority. I thank you for that and I think that we have come to, uh, almost a Solomonic decision, I suppose. But I think that, that we have tried our best to be fair to both the city staff and to the appellant in, uh, reaching this conclusion. So, thank you, Liz, for coming forward and thank you, Lucas, for giving us such a detailed set of. Alternatives and background and thanks to Greg for, uh, for his experience in running around all these streets. Um, so I think we're through with item two. And I'd like to move on to item three, a review of the draft ordinance. Um. Could we hear, this, this is.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Your presentation.
Um. Uh, Lucas, uh, could you take us through this draft ordinance? Uh, draft, a text amendment, I guess, ordinance and text amendment. It looks to me like of the eighty-seven pages, there are, oh gosh. There's a large number of sections, but only about a dozen or fourteen that we haven't already reviewed.
Well, and I would even preface it, let me just, let me just start by, um, just reminding the, the commission of where we were at. Um, we've been, we've been reviewing these sections for, for several months. It started as early as last year and it's continued. On, um, pausing at certain times due to, due to, um, the unprecedented, uh, situation with COVID nineteen. We're back on track here, reviewing, providing information, um, revisions to the errata as well as minor, uh, changes. I do not have the, the code up for, to put it up for, um. For review to go through like we did last time in, in the finite detail that we did before. Um, but I do ask the commission, so let me just remind the commission, what we're looking at here is. Is errata that, that speaks to, um, consistency, I would say, throughout the code in terms of how it's. It's, um, identified, each, each of the sections are identified, updates to out of date. Or omissant, um, state guidelines and even cross, cross referencing to other sections. Of the, of the, of the various titles, um, typically Title Ten. And in addition to that, within this code, the, the stark difference to what you're seeing here with this code amendment. Is anything that we've looked at up to this point that has come forward, uh, as a part of this draft ordinance. That we've been massaging over the past, uh, couple of meetings. Anything that we've looked at up to this point is now in black and white and that is what will be reflected, uh, moving forward in any of those changes. Anything that is up for and, and new into this. To this, um, draft ordinance or code amendment is now in, in red. And it still includes the, the strike through, which the strike through identifies sections being removed. And then the underlying, underline identifying those new sections. So that's where we're at in, in terms of this. Eighty, like, like Chair Quillisi was saying, nearly eighty, eighty pages of, uh, code amendment they're looking at here. It's about fifty-four sections in total, um, right around, like, Chair. Um, right around like Chair Quillissey was saying, in between twelve and fourteen new sections. Up for um review tonight, I would ask the commission. Tonight, if there are any questions on any of those sections that we go through those sections, knowing that. The areas that are in black and white have already been looked at. Um, potentially in multiple uh meetings, not just uh. With the draft ordinance that's before us tonight for consideration or for before the commission for consideration. Um, so with that, I would I would ask the commission if they have any questions or concerns. Or clarifications in terms of the code, remember, we're keeping it within the errata and minor changes, I know that we're going to be going in a deeper dive, I know. Uh Commissioner Nolan, Commissioner uh Lottis, even Chair Quillissey. And um, I mean, all the commissioners really have have identified an interest in diving into the code and and. Looking at some of those quote unquote out of date sections or inconsistent sections and righting those wrongs. So with that, I open it up to the commission for discussion. That ends my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, the the first new section that I see. And we're, by the way, we're talking about attachment A to uh item number three. Uh, is on page two, section four. Uh, which you can see in your packets is is uh red underline or strikeout. Any questions on that one, it it looks to me like it um. It is adding section names or subsection names. And it is also clarifying. What sequo is and what specific plans are and certain other things as defined in. In the code or in state law.
Correct.
Um, I would just like to commend both Quillissey and Lucas. On all the work involved with this, I mean, really, you've got a fantastic job and I don't have much at all. Um, just to to ask about, but I um really, it's, yeah, you've been, you've. The amount of work is pretty much. Yeah, um, but uh so page four of eighty seven, just a quick question, um, there's um. Administrative exemption from exterior lighting standards. Um, that, I don't know all the wording or that, I didn't go look at that. The resection that it's referring to, but it this this in no way would allow violation of the night sky, correct?
Oh, correct, it's it's simply it's simply clarifying, it it originally said in compliance with Article sixteen point five. And all we've done is add the title and chapter and the name of that article, didn't change any of the requirements in the code.
Okay. Just clarification.
Yeah, it's it's instead of just saying Article sixteen point five, it's giving some some breadth to that area so that you know where to. You know where you're potentially looking at in the code instead of thumbing through it.
And you know the subject matter before you get there, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's what you've done in terms of including that all throughout and consistently is is just great. And um, just one other question, page thirty four. It's in red, I just wasn't sure why. Service stations, gasoline service stations are on the same. Row as second residential unit. And and the same with formula businesses, I don't know why it's in the row with telecommunications, maybe there was some kind of a. Formatting.
No, you're right, those those uh right column references are in the wrong place.
Oh, interesting, no. I think that was the only thing that I just drew my attention, but uh. Yeah, I don't know where they go, but.
Duly noted, thank you.
And.
That's why we like lots of eyes on this stuff. Thank you.
Well, when you're dealing with eighty seven pages, holy moly, you know, um, oh, gosh.
And this is the easy stuff.
Yeah. Um, and then I don't think I don't think there's a good way to do this, but I so page twenty eight. Um, what are we talking about here? Commercial and manufacturing development standards, um, okay. On page twenty A, so we have we have subsection uh, we've got. A and B, and then under B, there's these subsections one, two, three and four.
Page twenty eight of eighty seven?
Yeah.
For the VMU's.
Yeah, 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 let's see, all standard shall apply to the VMU, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then you turn the page, so you've got some subsections, uh, you know, subsection one, two, three and four. Um, so by the time you get to subsection two. It and it's a formatting thing, and I know, I know, uh, we talked about formatting and a lot of times the coding people. Will do the formatting, but I don't think they would change this, but you know. So we get to number two and it's like one giant big paragraph and. I don't know if we could start a new paragraph like with um. Properties maybe devoted to, you know, it's just it's just a big, long paragraph and if we could. Either do a couple of paragraphs under subsection two. Starting with properties and then another one starting with exceptions down in about the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ninth line. That would help because I don't think we can put the um. The little I's and the double I and the triple I's, whatever you call that, um. I don't thi- if we could list.
Roman numerals, yeah.
Like a numeral, that would be helpful, but I don't, I saw somewhere else that they, you know, the formatting isn't done that way, but I. Just if if there's a way to break up these really large paragraphs, so it's just. Uh, a little easier to read, um, it would be great, but I don't, I just, I just don't know how much flexibility we have.
Yeah, well, we could defer to the city attorney on it, I, my son being an attorney, I know they. As a class often seem to like long paragraphs and long sentences.
Well, that's.
Because it keeps everything of a certain priority together.
Never let an attorney write a zoning code section, please.
Yeah.
I'm just doing.
If we had properties may only be devoted. The second time and exceptions to this replacement or requirement may be granted. If those become new paragraphs, I don't know if they need to be renumbered and everything beyond uh renumbered.
I did notice on page forty seven. Um, they start, they have a subsection one and they have a, they start a new paragraph. Under the subsection, so I thought, well, if we did it there, maybe we can.
You, that's fine.
On page twenty seven?
Uh, page forty forty seven.
Forty seven.
This is where it breaks it up in general plans, yeah.
At the bottom.
Yeah, at the bottom, they do.
We have G sub subsection one, and then there's a new paragraph.
I see.
Even that kind of thing helps, so I don't know if uh, I don't know if we have the flexibility to do that or not, but if we do, it seems like.
Well, if we if we can do it on forty seven, there's no reason not to do it on twenty eight, I suppose. What do you think, Lucas?
I think I think you're, I think we're well within our boundaries here of of the errata to do.
So that would be uh on line five, we'd have a new paragraph.
Yeah.
And. And on line nine, we have a new paragraph. I don't know if there's anything else that needs to be done there, the the little. The little I and III and IIII that you find in the text is different from the indenting of sub paragraphs.
Right.
That's a that's a a listing convention, not an indenting convention.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and for me, it's, I just want to make sure that it's it's not losing its intent and it's not falling into a different category, so. We just gotta be careful with how how that ends up, um, so we'll mark that as. As a as a red component so that we can see that.
Make make a little space there, yeah, okay.
Otherwise, I I don't think I have anything else ruling.
I didn't really either, so.
And uh Commissioner Trent?
No, I'm good.
You're good. Well, all right, we need to uh, we need to correct a couple of things in. In uh, on page thirty four.
Right.
And and then a couple of uh extra spaces on page twenty eight of eighty seven. Um. My hat's off to the staff for getting this organized in this format, that must take. A lot of headaches. Yeah, to get to get all of this done.
Well, this has definitely been a team effort.
Lucas and I.
Yeah.
Initially did did the easy part, which was going through and saying, should we fix this? But then when you have to create a text amendment. Uh, then all of a sudden it becomes very tightly controlled as to how you have to present it on paper. And it uh, and you're looking at at uh just pulling pieces out of the code. And if you look at the code online, it has headers and footers on every page. And to make this document, you have to strip all that stuff out and still make it fit. You know, on the pages with no widows and no orphans and all of that stuff, that's. There's a whole lot of I'd call post-production work that goes on with the staff here. That I think we need to recognize, it's a tremendous effort.
Agreed.
Um, okay, well, if there are no other questions and we didn't have anybody from the public. That uh, that wanted to talk in either public communications. Well, this is, is this a public hearing again? This item three?
It is not.
I thought it was.
It is not, well, it's a review of a draft ordinance, so we're making a decision. To uh, the the appropriate motion, if there is going to be a motion here. Is to recommend to the city council that they approve this draft. Text amendment in the form of an ordinance, correct?
Uh, I would, I would like to get clarification from the city attorney, um, knowing that this is a change in land use. Uh. Nikhil, can you clarify, it's my understanding that with an item like this um before the. The planning commission that it would need to have a public hearing, this is not that, um, we have not noticed it in that format. My understanding is that we would need to provide uh proper notification and hold a public hearing in order for us to make that recommendation to city council.
That's correct, on the agenda right now, it's just shown as review of draft ordinance, but it's not a public hearing and we would need to hold a public hearing.
Right, so it.
Okay.
Andized, uh, yeah.
Um, so then if if a motion is appropriate here, and I'm I no longer contending that it is. The motion would be to agendize this draft ordinance with corrections as discussed. Um. For the August nineteenth meeting in a public hearing. To decide whether or not to recommend approval of this ordinance by the city council, is that right?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
So do you need?
Okay, and. So moved would do it for me.
So moved.
There we go. It's not as it's not as official as we'll have it for the nineteenth.
You have to make one little comment, I I actually really enjoyed going through this because I now have a big list of things to go back to.
Isn't that the point of what we're doing here?
Yes.
Is to create those additional conversations when we do do the deeper dive into the code, that is, that is what we're doing.
You betcha.
Yeah, and and by the way, I just want to mention.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a second. I'll second the motion.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Lottis and seconded by Commissioner Nolan, is there any discussion of this motion to agendize? This uh ordinance. In a public hearing, uh, is the nineteenth appropriate, Lucas? I think we're about there, you, or are you?
I think the nineteenth is appropriate.
The notice was sent to the paper today.
You can notice in time?
Yeah, the note, the.
Cause it's just two weeks.
It's two weeks, the notice, the noticing is is being done as we speak, so, yes, it is appropriate.
Although we'll hear tomorrow morning if they can make it in the Friday paper, if not, it'll have to be the next one. We haven't heard from the newspaper until tomorrow morning.
Does it have to be in the paper and on the website, both of them, ten days prior to the meeting? Or can it be one ten days and one less than ten days?
Yeah, that's government code requirement.
Attorney?
It's it's a government code requirement, yeah.
Ten days.
Okay, so if we if we can't get it into day after tomorrow's newspaper. Then the nineteenth is not makeable, it would be September second or something.
Correct. So we're pushing for the nineteenth currently, if it does not make it into the night into the nineteenth, then it would be the first meeting in September.
Okay, um, so I I would propose an amendment to the motion then, rather than to say the nineteenth, to say at the first. Possible meeting consistent with government code requirements.
It's a government code section.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, government code section five, four, nine, five, six point five subsection E, I believe, that's right, E, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so Commissioner Lottis, would you be amenable to that amendment?
Of course.
Okay, and and the seconder?
Yes, I agree.
Great. Terrific, any any discussion of the motion then? Uh, do we have to vote on the amendment and then the motion, is that right, attorney?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Or if you if you agree, if the if the person who made the motion and the person who seconded the motion. Agree to amending the motion, then we just vote on the amended motion?
That that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Not two separate motions.
So any dis- yeah, any discussion then on that further? Then Sherry, let's have a roll call on that motion.
Quillissey.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Terrific, motion passes for zip. All right. And uh, Lucas, you and I can dive back in here at your next available time.
And I I would like to just make one comment, I I do appreciate all all the efforts that have been going on here and. Remind the commission that this is a um marathon, not a sprint as we move forward with this.
And there there will be more text amendments this size. Before we're done. Uh, okay, let's move on to item four, director decisions, any questions of staff of of the uh. Uh, of the staff on tree permits, sign permits? What uh, I'm I'm curious on the sign permit, Lucas, the the um. New signage for Peralta Real Estate Team. Oh, six oh two east Ohio Avenue. Oh, that's that's way out east. I I thought I had heard.
Across the street from Sea Fresh.
That there was a. It's around Sea Fresh, yeah, okay.
Across the street.
I didn't realize there was a real estate office there. Okay. Um, I had heard that there was a request. Um. By the folks, by the real estate folks at Country Club and Ohio Avenue. To change their signage in front of that little thing that looks like a miniature house. Um, did I hear that wrong or is there something that's gonna show up here sooner?
Yeah, there's.
Or later?
Yeah, there's definitely an application and for um. Uh, for new for for new for replacement of an existing signage for for a new business for a new business there, yes.
Changing, yeah, changing Coldwell Banker to live Sotheby?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll hear about that later if there in fact is. Uh, a director's decision on it, if it isn't already within. decision on it, if it isn't already within code.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions for staff on that? Then let's move on to Item Five. And tentative agenda. We might, we'll hope to have that Title 10 errata and other revisions as a public hearing item. And I think it's probably enough to go through that, not to introduce new sections for review at that point. I think we're all getting kind of tired of it, but-
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to get a whole lot more in terms of sections for the Title 10 errata and other revisions, minor revisions. I would also like to note that there may be an item up for discussion for August 19th, which is Ojai Village Pharmacy. We're looking at clarifications on that, moving, moving that forward. So that would be either on the August 19th or the September 2nd meeting. The addition to that is the 1201 San Ramon Way. We're just, we're, we're getting close with the applicant in terms of getting that buttoned up and ready for, for commission consideration. And that's a new home at the end of San Ramon, where there's a vac, currently a vacant lot, which I believe is the last vacant lot for that subdivision that was done in-
Right.
In the late 70s, early 80s.
Okay. Any questions for staff there? Then I think we are down to, does, Lucas, do you have any other comments you wish to make as, as a staff report to the commission?
Not at this point. The general plan update, I know we have that on as a discussion item, and that has, has been somewhat stalled. We're looking at how to, to keep that moving forward currently in terms of timelines and, and working with that consultant. So we're, we're reevaluating that currently. I know a couple, several months ago, that was going to be an ongoing discussion item as that item evolved. So we're re, we're reassessing or reevaluating that timeline.
Okay.
Regarding the-
Then we come to the highlight, oh, sorry.
I was gonna say, and regarding to that, to that sign, I think you, you certainly will be seeing something in the director's decisions that we had just previously looked at. And obviously, any other determinations regarding trees and, and other such matters, even, even director's exemptions certainly would be within that, that format as well.
Right, okay. Then to the highlight of the evening, words from our City Council Liaison, Councilmember Souza Francina.
That's so nice to call me the highlight of the evening.
I know.
I really enjoyed tonight's meeting. It was very exciting, and I think it's been a very balanced, fair decision on the, on the, well, I'm glad that you liked me, or at least you say you did, because you're gonna, it looks like you're gonna be seeing me another four years. I got all my, I'm the first candidate that had to do the grueling District Four, you know, the, where you get your signatures only from people that live in District Four. If you look at the map-
Oh, yes.
I only could, I only had one person on my own block that signed. The other person was out of town. I mean, that could sign, you know, that I knew. But then I, it took about, normally it takes me two hours to collect signatures of people that live in the city. This time I started on Saturday, and because nobody knows, you know, what district they're in, it was a process. First day, five signatures, second day, four signatures. And today I had my 30th signature, Johnny Johnson and Kitty, because I knew they were, you know, you have to make sure that they're registered. So I got all the paperwork done, so, and I, I don't think anyone's going to challenge me, so you'll see me, for better or worse.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a big load off my mind, you know, I don't have to-
And, and if you're, if you're running unopposed, you may not have to pay the $700 to put your candidate statement in the book.
Yeah, I already waived that. I don't, I, I, I got in free this time.
Whoa, okay.
I did, I did all that. I'm, I'm done. Tomorrow I'll be, I'll get certified, I hope. Okay, and then, oh, I just wanted to tell you that when I disappear from the screen, I just want to assure you I'm still listening, you know, so just so you know that I haven't, I'm not out of the, out of the, out of range. And then the only other thing I wanted to say is that I look forward to the day when on Grand Avenue, we can remove the parking on one side and restrike that street so that we have proper bike lanes. And if there's a hitch, the other alternative was one I suggested ages ago, you, you really have to reduce the speed limit when there's bicycles present. But I was on Ventura Avenue the other day, and I noticed while on the, on the stretches where there's not enough room for bike lanes on both sides, it's, you know, they just remove the parking on one side. So that's becoming more and more common, which ought to make it easier for us to accomplish. And do you have any questions that you want to ask, want to ask me? Then I'll just-
Don't, don't want to, don't want to prejudice any future decision that you may have to make with regard to 603 Lyon. Just, I know you'll, you'll, if it, if it comes up to the council, you'll have an open mind about what the applicants are looking for.
Yes, of course, yeah.
Any other questions for Souza? Gosh, I missed my gavel, but in that case then, I did, go ahead.
I just said we missed seeing you.
Yes, I don't know why that isn't working. At any rate, that, that being the end of business at 916, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Oh.
Thank you all very much.